Right, so the time must be eleven thirty. In time for Arda to be here. We had a extended meeting this morning. We had a lot of public comments. So why don't we go in around and do some introductions? Um, to start us off and then we'll get right into your presentation. So we do audio and video record our meetings um and provide those. In real time online as well. So you want to start us off Kristen and then we'll end with our panelists.
Sure. Hi, Kristen Sullivan, Deputy County Manager.
Steve Odericio.
Adams County Commissioner.
Julie Moll, Adams County Commissioner.
Lynn Baca, Adams County Commissioner.
Uh, Fenter, Adams County Commissioner.
Heidi Miller, County Attorney.
Dion Stroeder, County Manager.
And we are, we agree, Deputy County Manager.
David Center, uh, Art of Program Manager.
Matt Hopper, uh, Chairman of, uh, the Regional Transportation Authority.
Mark Osborne, Interim Budget Finance Director.
Great.
Floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, first of all, thank you all for, for inviting us today. Um, it's great to be here with our partners with Adams County. To talk about, uh, the, uh, Eritreopolis Regional Transportation Authority, some of the exciting things that are going on in the area. And to give you a little history of, um, of how Art was formed. And I, I look over and at Kristen and, and, and Alicia and others that, uh, you know, it was a long thought, um, uh, detailed, um, task to get there. And I think that, um, through that process, um, I think we ended up with, um, a successful program today. And so, um, I thank all of, uh, my colleagues on that side of the table for all the hard work that went into, uh, to forming. The Regional Transportation Authority. Is that working?
No. The side is just up.
Maybe just hit it though.
You did it once and then. I should just do it.
Okay. You can do it from there.
Yeah.
Great. So I'm gonna start off with a little bit of the history and before we kind of get into the formation, the formal side of, of Arta. Um, I, I think we take a step back in, in, in the May of twenty sixteen. The, uh, the Colorado Eritreopolis, uh, visioning study was concluded. Uh, that was a study that was funded in part by Federal Highway, um, Adams County, um, C dot. And it was really to look at the infrastructure needs of the area in and around Denver International Airport. And how we could better serve the public and create economic opportunities in those corridors. The study identified that more than twenty one thousand acres just south of DIA to I seventy was prime for development. And that the main barrier to achieving that opportunity was the lack of infrastructure, mainly transportation infrastructure. Just to give you a little background on that area, the independent study by BBC, um, that same year estimated that those twenty one thousand acres. Based on their current land use maps could create approximately ten million square feet, uh, million square feet of retail. Thirty million square feet of Class A office space, uh, forty six million square feet of industrial. And bring more than a hundred and seventy thousand jobs to Adams County in that area. Um, and again, those were numbers from twenty eighteen. Um, in twenty eighteen, after multiple attempts, uh, to address the transportation needs. Uh, had all failed, Adams County, the City of Aurora and the Eritreopolis Area Coordinating District came together. To create an IGA which established the Regional Transportation Authority. Now, in their early years, um, that, that Regional Transportation Authority. Although it was open to all the developments in the area, there was a lot of skepticism. Will this be successful? Is this just another program that, that will never build anything and, and it's just an additional tax that the, uh, developments would be placing on their property? Um, and most of this area you couldn't reach by road. You would need the Hundred and First Airborne to reach most of this. So economic opportunities weren't going to happen there without roads being built. And so the original area included, uh, a new development. It was called the Aurora Highlands. Um, which represented about three thousand acres. Um, in that kind of the, the nucleus of that area, if you think about it from, from the airport down to I seventy, it was kind of in that middle area. And that was going to be mostly residential, um, and some mixed use, some retail. Um, since then, because Arda has been successful and, and did follow through with its charge to. You know, to design, construct and finance this regional public infrastructure. Today, the boundaries of Arda now represent about seven thousand acres. Um, or eleven square miles and over ten developments are now included in its boundaries. And so, um, its success led to additional, um, developments wanting to participate. Um, it has also helped with the financing of the infrastructure for the area. And, and allowed us to continue to be able to deliver regional transportation. Currently, um, Arda oversees and delivers close to, um, a billion dollars in regional transportation projects. Um, I'm probably go the next slide. Uh, the board, as you see, I'm very honored to, to have, to have two my, uh, oh, we're going too fast now.
Oh, what is it?
Now it works.
It's a good sneak peek.
Yeah, it was a sneak peek.
Okay, that was a good one. There, I got her.
So this, this is our, our Board of Directors, uh, myself, um, Steve Odericio, um, Lynn Baca, and then we have two city council members. Both Chris, um, Curtis Gardner and Steve Sundberg, um, all serve on that. Uh, the boundaries, the current boundaries of Arda, you can see on here today. Um, here's the existing boundaries and you can see the Aurora Highlands, kind of that, that middle section there. So you can see how it has grown out. Um, from that and, um, and we get inquiries all the time from other developments that are. Our, bless you, are interested in, um, in joining, um, and participating in Arda improvements. Um, and, and I, and I think should be noted that in the beginning, um, the county commissioners and the city officials and, and, and all of us. We did try to encourage, um, kind of a, um, lift the tide and we'll lift all rowboats, um, situation. Again, there was some skepticism. Would it be successful? And because of that, you know, we only had the one development that, that signed on. Um, since then, the, the expansion of Arda has been organic. Meaning that we, we don't solicit anyone to, to really join. It is really being grown from the improvements that they see. That are being constructed. And so they see the benefit to that, uh, which has done two things. One, it has again created, uh, more connectivity in the entire region. Um, again, if in the absence of Arda, what you would have is, uh, these road networks would be created in a patch quilt. Kind of scenario where you would have a quarter of mile built at a time that development occurred. And so you really didn't get that regional connection. We get asked a lot, so what is, what is Arda's component of, of this infrastructure? You know, are we, um? Alleviating the developer from their obligation to, to construct any of the, the infrastructure. And the answer is no. So if you think about the best way to describe it is on a six lane road. On a six lane road, you might have a, a property owner on the east side of the road and one on the west side of the road. Each are required to build two lanes as part of their development. And so, and then someday in the future. If, uh, if funds exist and when traffic counts warrant, two additional lanes, capacity lanes would be built. The problem with that is, again, the development builds only a component of that road as they continue to develop. And so there's no connection from A to B. And when the traffic counts warrant, in the end, um, government a lot of times does not have the financing to be able to add those capacity. And so we have. Um, you know, we, we have the things that we all hate, right? The traffic and, and things where it's the congestion that is held up by not having the proper road section. Uh, for those connections. So what Arda really does in theory is we build those middle two lanes first. And so we make the connection from A to B, which then encourages development to occur. And then we still require those, those adjacent developers to build a proportionate share of that road. What we found is that when Arda is designing, we designed the full six lanes, the scenario that I gave you. And that development all of a sudden says, wait a minute. If you're going to build the road, it would be better for me to build it today versus waiting until tomorrow. And since you're going to put in two lanes and I'll be required to put in my two lanes, I'll go ahead and build my two lanes today. And so what we've seen is in most cases, when we go to construction, we're seeing the entire full section of the road being constructed. On the front, which has led to the economic growth in the entire region. Um, just thought we would give you a, a project list. So this is again, if you look at the, um, improvements, um, that are currently in our program. Um, we'll start down at I seventy. So there's two interchanges at I seventy. There's the, uh, currently the I seventy Piccadilly interchange is under construction. Art is participating in a small portion of that, um, about a twenty percent contribution towards that project. Uh, we just kicked off the, um, project on I seventy. And so that is the Eritreopolis. Interchange at I seventy, which will eventually connect to Eritreopolis Parkway, which will go from I seventy. It will connect I seventy. Uh, right into Jackson Gap. So it would be the closest interchange connection on I seventy to the airport. Uh, that, that is going to be a tremendous, um, economic corridor, uh, within Adams County. Um, we'll just move up from the south, which I know.
Ah, there we go.
Usually it doesn't work on two.
All right. Oh, it's not. Okay. So we'll just, we'll just kind of point our way up. So as, as we go up to, um. Dave will point for me. So this is Eritreopolis Parkway. So as you can see, it connects from I seventy. Goes through what's called a, uh, diversion diamond interchange just south of twenty sixth. Um, and then continues up to forty eighth Avenue and then on up to fifty six where it ties into the existing road at Jackson Gap. Now, again, I would say that Arda in its success, um, we recently had Denver International Airport contact us. And they had a section of that same road section from Jackson Gap down to the city limits of Aurora. And so for efficiency, um, they've asked that, um, potentially Arda consider, um. Managing that project, um, on their behalf so that it's one corridor from, uh, Penya all the way down to I seventy. So that that one piece is all designed as part of the full package. And so they'll be, they'll be expanding that road, uh, Porteus, which there is currently a four lane section from fifty six up to, um.
Sixty.
Sixty, sixty eight is currently four lanes. Um, that developer has come forth and said, we'd like to go ahead and dedicate the right of way. Cost to artists so that in the future you can plan for the additional lanes to be expanded through that, that corridor as well. Um, the, the roads that are going from, uh, east to west at the bottom of the screen is, um, twenty sixth Avenue. And you can see the little, watch it. You can see the little teal swings offline a little bit. That is because, um, twenty six does not go all the way through. So we addressed any traffic concern there. Um, by realignment of twenty six to thirty second Avenue. That's a majestic, uh, industrial park area. And so. With the, uh, coming online of the I seventy Piccadilly interchange, we wanted to make sure that we weren't creating some type of a, a traffic. Uh, congestion area there where you would be making a right turn and an immediate left turn. And so, uh, again, through, through good planning, uh, forward thinking that we're able to address that. That corridor. So the twenty sixth Avenue will go now from Tower Road all the way out to Monahan. Um, and then it will extend beyond that out to Hudson.
Yes.
Yes. So that entire corridor will, will, will continue to go through there. Um, we'll just go on head up to the red line, which is forty eighth Avenue. You can see it starts with purple over on the left hand side of the screen and then moves to red and then to green. That's forty eighth Avenue. Um, again, it has a couple of little swings there and that's still aligned with existing roads. And so the purple connects into what's called Green Valley Ranch Boulevard, I believe. And so forty eighth Avenue kind of follows that line through. So again, we make sure that the, the connections are good. The, uh, red then is what's, so there's a, I'm sorry, there's an interchange at, uh, forty eighth and E four seventy. Um, that was not an Arda project originally. I know that the county participated in that project. Um, but, um, Arda is contributing some funding now, um, to what is connecting into that interchange. And then the red line is forty eighth Avenue, um, continuing from E four seventy over to Eritreopolis Parkway. And then the green line, you see a little, another little swing there. Um, that was, um, to accommodate, um, Aurora Public Schools. Um, and, um, also to avoid, that was good engineering because without making that little swing. Um, Arda would have designed two, uh, pedestrian underpasses. Which are expensive and hard to maintain. And so by just swinging that road up along the power lines, uh, we were able to, uh. To avoid those two pedestrian and also make a contiguous site for, uh, public schools, a high school site. Um, and then on up to the top, the red line from east to west is fifty sixth Avenue, improvements along that corridor as well. Move. And we also have Piccadilly Road on the left going up and down, so north and south. Um, the improvements, as we've already talked about on Eritreopolis Parkway, over to the, uh, right and then Monahan. To the far right. So those are kind of the general projects that, um, are currently underway. And so here, here's a more comprehensive list of our projects and the status of each of those. So we talked about forty eighth Avenue. It's currently under construction from E four seventy to, says Pohten, that is actually to, uh, Eritreopolis Parkway now. Um, thirty eighth is under, um, is contracted and actually under construction. Um, we're, uh.
PAH.
PAH Parkway, um, that, that section is complete. The second phase of that is, um, at ninety five percent drawings. And so that will be going to construction, um, probably next year. Twenty sixth Avenue, uh, we talked about those and you can see, we will have. Happy to talk about any of the particulars of, of any of the projects. These are those. And then this, and the list continues. So these are all of the, uh, projects in our CIP. Oh, now we got fun facts, because I always like fun facts. All right. Well, the fun fact is if we were to start at, uh, the government center here today. Uh, with the roads that Arda is building, we could build a, a, uh, twelve foot road from here to Vale. It's actually a little bit further than that. So that's, that's how much we're building. And then one that I like, uh, or you can see what Dave put in another one, if that, that's twenty one, a hundred and twenty one football fields of ten inch concrete. It's a lot of concrete. Um, and then this is one I like is that if we, and he puts in New Mexico, but this is interesting. That if we started at this building and we built our ten foot sidewalks or our multi-use sidewalks from here, we could get to the Utah border. That's the, the amount of sidewalks that Art is currently, uh, constructing. So. Just some fun facts there about, uh, what, what you guys are participating.
Yeah. Yep, that's it.
Okay. Happy to, um, I know that was a lot of information. I tried to get through it all and, and, uh, and be respectful of your time. But really we wanted to open this up for questions and, and really kind of give you more of, um, some more feedback on just Arda and the great things that, that are going on.
I, I would like to start if I can. Um, so this is what we've done so far, what we have to do by the time we're done with all of the projects. On the screen. That's a question.
I'm sorry.
Is, is this, uh, what's on the screen, a, what has been done so far or what we will do when we're done with all the projects?
Uh, so a lot of those are, are in design right now. And so those will go to construction. Um, and that's what makes up just under a, a billion dollars. Now, again, Art's portion of that is not a billion dollars. Because again, as I described the six lane road, you have development that are participating in that. So it's roughly a third of that. Um, and then as, as Arda continues to, um, to grow its boundaries. Uh, the connections from, um, like A to B now on to C. Get incorporated into those projects. Um, when we add a project, not just an area, but when we add a project. Then, um, that goes through a couple of tests, right? Is it regional in nature? So we're not building any roads that would be required for local streets. Or development. Uh, these are all regional connections. And those regional connections then are approved by the, uh, Regional Transportation Authority. And then advanced on for concurrence, um, uh, by the county commissioners, this board. As well as the city and the, uh, districts that represent the area. And so there's, there's a lot of checks and balances before you add a project and expand the, the scope of what Art is currently, uh, charged with.
Just for, um, did, did you already talk about how the funding structure is?
I did not, Steve. Great.
Is that a good question? On the presentation or should we bring it up now?
It was not. No, we can bring it up now.
Okay, so, um, i- i- and you can help me, uh, if, if I get this any sort of off. We, within that boundary, so maybe pull up the map.
Yeah.
Is order to complete all of these projects, we agreed within this boundary that we will contribute a hundred percent of our road bridge fund. That's within this boundary, plus fifty percent of our general fund. Proceeds that are being generated here.
From the property tax.
From the property tax. That's unique in, in, in what, but it, it does say that what we're trying to do is identify. It's almost like an urban renewal or whatever, maybe what CRA will eventually, but it's like saying, hey, what is developed here will pay for itself here. What it does take away is that some of that money that would be developed here goes into the other stuff where we could use it elsewhere. Meaning half of our general is being recycled back in and all of our road bridge. But that also is part of the reason why. When we add other folks and other projects or other communities to this project, it speeds up the payment. When we add other folks and other projects or other communities to this project, it speeds up the payment. Of that debt. And so already, when we initially started, what was the expected end date, if you recall?
One sixty seven.
One sixty seven. At this point, because we're we're succeeding in expanding it and making it regional and asking for regional partnerships. It is now down to what?
I think we've cut twenty years off. Forty seven or forty something.
So by doing that, we've actually, that that means that we're gonna pay it off early. Now, it's up to the future board and others who sit in these seats to say if they want to renew. Hopefully, I don't think they should, but at some point, you're gonna still have to pay for maintenance. But the point I'm making is that this is why a lot of times we're expanding. There's two reasons is that this was all supposed to be regional in nature. And at the beginning of this process, there was a lot of concern that this was focused only on. Or our Highlands as one developer. That created a lot of concern internally and externally for everyone. Because it's supposed to be a regional transportation authority. And through lots of work, we've managed to get it to the point where it is truly. Like, it is regional. All the roads anyway were always gonna be regional because that's all we approved. But now we've got other folks. On the borders saying, ooh, if you're gonna develop this three of the six, I'll develop the other three of the six, and it's speeding up our payment of the debt overall. And we're safe, we'll be able to save a significant amount of time and money in the long run. And so this has been some of the success, but I would like. And then can you describe what Aurora's contribution is? So I just described the county contribution. If you could describe the Aurora's contribution.
So so we have three, basically three funding sources, uh the county, the city, and the districts. And so um. I mean, Steve did a great job describing what the county uh share of the program is. The city um that's all its use tax and fees. Use today collects. And so uh and why that's important um is because even though it's a, it is a smaller dollar amount. Uh they contribute less than the other two entities. Okay. But they also do it all in front end. And so that front end cash with uh net present value actually helps to kind of bridge the gap between the disparity of. Of the um of the funding source. Um and it helps with us being able to um go issue debt. In the bond market, to be able to show that revenue that as a building comes out of the ground, we immediately have cash. Versus kind of looking at what is the property tax over the next forty years. And so that has really helped Arta to get favorable. Financing uh in its most recent um. Funding was in last summer, uh last fall and right around Thanksgiving, actually. And in that particular one, we were out for just around two hundred million dollars in bonds. And we received over three point eight billion dollars of um of offers, right? So we were oversubscribed on that financing. And I think that just speaks to the credit uh position of Arta, that investors see that it's it's a strong credit. And therefore um are willing to invest. Uh we work on a waterfall. Kind of getting down the bond, but I'll get back to the revenue, but on the waterfall of that. So once we hit a hundred and twenty five percent of coverage of our servicing our existing debt. Then we're able to go back to the market to issue additional debt. And so as long as uh we don't take on more debt than what's success. The uh success that the area is having. And so that's what's allowed us to do that. The city, again, going back to the funding sources, uh use tax and fees. And then each of the areas within that boundary places a five mills that's through Arta. Regional Transportation Authority uh mill levy. So in addition to agreeing that, okay, I want to bring my land in. Um they're also agreeing to uh placing five additional mills on their property. In the expansion, to get to Steve's point on how do we cut the twenty, the twenty years off the plan of finance. Part of that is, as we've expanded, what we've looked at is that five additional mills that's created on that new area that comes in. We look at that as additional projects. So we will add that back into contributions towards the project. So the areas coming in get true benefit by by including. What we don't do is spend the use tax. Or the county's contribution towards those projects. And so. I was thinking of a good analogy to kind of describe it, and it's like you have your day job and and you decide, I want to get a new car. So you go get a second job and. Now, this is gonna be a great second job because I do easy math. So easy math says, your second job is a hundred thousand dollars. And so. You know, you could, but based off your 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 second job, you can go get a hundred thousand dollar car. But you say, I don't want a hundred thousand dollar car. I'm I'm only gonna get a fifty thousand dollar car, double the payments that I would on that hundred thousand. So instead of paying it over a five year period and paying fifty thousand dollars of tax or um interest on that. I'm gonna do it half the time, so I'm saving the the uh the interest on that period. What that does is it allows us to pay it off at half the time, which is what Steve was talking about. And to reduce our uh our total contribution because we're paying it off so much faster. That ten years is on the back end of Artis. So that's at full buildout. So every year we take off is literally worth hundreds of millions of dollars to to the county. Saving those dollars, so. I don't know if you want to add to any of that.
No, that's that's great. Yeah, the day it ends, we'll uh we'll have a, you know, a lot of expansion of resources in the county. All of that will stop going towards Arta and become county money towards other programs or.
It will be built out. It'll be like when you're done with that car payment.
So the I T A that was originally created, is that, does that have a sunset? Or is it just in perpetuity? Or how does?
It it is uh until all the projects are constructed and the the debt is retired.
I guess one maybe point of clarity, the the Arta board with the two members of the commissioners is able to do the inclusions.
Correct.
So they can expand the boundaries, include additional properties. That requires us to share additional property tax along the way. But if they're going to change the scope and add additional projects into the mix or additional uh. You know, that that would then require the full Board of County Commissioners to approve that, as well as Aurora's council and the district.
Okay.
So there there's two different sides of it happening.
Yeah. And again, I think that's a a really good point. It's a good checks and balance because I, we have added additional projects. And um we've looked at areas and then what is is it a logical outgrowth of an existing road corridor? And that's usually an easier sell, or is it a new corridor? And then what is the benefit to adding that? What is the economic opportunity that it creates? Um is this good for both the city, the county, and 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 the property? To to include that that additional uh road.
So I think that's important, is that there may be questions that come up. More needs to know that there are, one type of question is, do we expand the boundary to allow these others to join? That's separate from do we expand the scope of what our to-do list is, our projects. And and the question that the board needs to be aware of and ask itself and together with our public works, with our finance people and all that is. By expanding the first question, do we expand the boundary? Are we willing to let fifty percent of that and a hundred percent of the road bridge in that area go right back into Arda? Until two thousand forty, you know? But then separately, and and the answer in the past was yes, because it speeds up our debt payment and it it accelerated things. But you gotta know that 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 we gotta be careful not to just forever expand, because you know, like where. Where it becomes almost like a U R A that doesn't have to go through this, you know? But that's why you have those checks and balances. Second question is to expand projects, which potentially, if we're not careful and stay on top of it. The private sector could ask for us to expand all sorts of stuff, like lobby the shit out of you or have lobby you all day long. And then now you're extending the potential date. So make sure that there's this balance of. Uh as we expand, is it helping us with the bottom line and speeding this up versus just ever expanding? So you don't want to look back at somebody in twenty seventy saying. Man, these guys just approved everything. We're never done with that one day when we pay it all off. So we have to ask those questions. And so that will be something that we just have to stay diligent on for future. And you'll tell this to somebody in ten years and you'll, you know. But then it gets to the other point is the checks and balances. And at the beginning, I told you, but one of the big concerns. Internally, externally, everywhere is, are we just helping one develop? Well, the answer's been no, and we've been very careful about it, but also other checks and balances. At the beginning, there was a big rub where we had an unsolicited anonymous request to do the debt. And we we denied it, but like, and it would have been like nine percent. We didn't know who the the bondholders would have been. And it was a real difficult. Since that time when we got that request, it it triggered us to say, wait, we've got to do a bunch, implement a bunch of checks and balances. And so if I could ask you guys, talk about the different checks and balances, about how we go up for the bankers, we go out, it's a public uh. Offering or not, i- i- is that the right way to put it? It's a, it is an offering, it's a public offering of the debt bonds. But like, talk about those checks and balances, because if somebody were ever to come back and ask questions, I want everyone on this board to feel comfortable to answer. No, we have checks and balances in place, but also identify where maybe we could do more. Because this, there's the lack of trust with metro districts to begin with. There's a lack of trust with certain special districts. And because this started out so focused on just one developer, um we have to be able to have those questions be able to answer. I want all of us to feel comfortable with it. And if we don't feel comfortable with it, we need to am- ask the right questions and resolve those questions. Does that sound right?
Yeah, there's a lot to unpack there. And so let's 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 start with the um uh the checks and balances as far as as the um. Question about like metro districts, et cetera. Um the 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 great thing here is unlike a like a developer kind of led metropolitan district. Is that, you know, this is made up of city officials, um county officials, and and then district represents, you know. Eritropolis area. And so by having that, there's the built-in checks by having um those elected officials as part of that. You have the, and I think it's the best of both worlds because you do have the consistency of um. Of the board, but yet you have the the turnover, the churn from elections and and new new members coming. Coming onto the board. And so you, you know, you get a lot of questions and like Lynn's ask a lot of question when she came on to to Arta. And so uh to, you know, educate themselves, and that's that's good for the process, right? It's good to have fresh eyes. New ways to look at things, questions asked, and then is there a better way we can do different things? Going back to the financing, I think I somewhat answered that in the fact that in our last uh bond, we were oversubscribed so great. Because of our credit position. In the early days, right, we. We didn't have, we had a, we had a map and a piece of land and there was no development and it was, it was basically a dirt deal. And so what Steve was talking about is we we did receive, Arta received an unsolicited proposal is what it was called, to be the um lender of last resort. Meaning that if you can't get funding from any other institution, um we'll fund you money at whatever it was. And um and we chose not to do that, to go through kind of the, um which I think was the right choice. We we chose to go through an organic, again, process where we we took on a little bit of debt in the beginning. Like our first bond was uh sixteen million dollars. And we just issued over two hundred million. So that just kind of tells you kind of, kind of the stack that we've gone, continuing to do that. Um the first time, it was a hard sell. To get that first sixteen million was tough. We all put in, each of the three entities all put in, I think it was. Um a quarter of a million dollars at the time to just cover the operations, you know, so that we could go out to the market. To hire the attorneys that were needed and the accounting firms and the, and and to have all those checks and balances. And so we all had to fund that on the front end. And so um once we were able to secure that, we were able to do design and we could show that we were ready to go to construction and start some projects. Then I think the, there was market acceptance at that point. And we were also be becoming, because there were things coming out of the ground and use taxes were flowing in, so we should, we could show some revenue coming in. We were servicing our bonds, we had over coverage of our of our debt service. Then we were able to be strong kind of in the marketplace on the second issuance and then the third issuance, we were very strong. And I believe we'll continue to do that. The expansion, um I, Steve talked about, you know, do, we have to be careful not to expand. I think that the way that the board, um through Steve's leadership and and Lynn's leadership and and the city councils, well, myself. We are really focused again on when you bring a new area, really having them contribute most of what they um are receiving, right? So when they, when they add that five additional mills, we're kind of capping the project list for the project add to that five mills. Meaning that, kind of going back to my second job thing, you're only spending that five, that five mill. So everything else that you put into the pot. Is going strictly to retire debt early. So although it's interesting, because we, Steve and I ran ran through this scenario one time. We were looking at, we're adding this much projects. Like, whoa, we're adding, you know, a hundred million dollars of projects. But it was saving us more than that. Because by bringing it in, then that revenue paid off our debt early. And so the savings on this, on the back end was greater than the additional projects. And we were only funding those projects with the tax revenues that we were generating off what was coming in. So they were really paying their own way for those additional projects. Um and so you'd ask, you might ask yourself, well, why would a development come in? Because without us, they don't have that five mills. And so um that's why it's it's. It's something that you see development saying, hey, you know, maybe we want to be in that. And also, they don't want to be at the end of the road. With the barricade, right? They want to take down the barricade and have a road in front of their property, not end of their property. And they know that if they continue under the kind of the traditional way of financing, they would go again, build that quarter of a mile. They wouldn't get the full mile in front of their property. And so they're at a competitive disadvantage. And as everyone puts that five mills on, you're not at a competitive disadvantage by putting the five. Which I think was one of the skepticism, I would say in the beginning, is that the Royal Highland said, we'll put the five mills on, and others said. Ah, we're not gonna do that. We'll be in advantage, right? But then they saw, wait a minute, I don't have a road. So I'm willing to put the five in and get the road because then I know I'm gonna develop faster. Cover all those. You want to get into the um.
So also, let's talk a little bit about how project management is done. You know, are the projects traditionally on time, on budget? And how do you deal with the potential concerns about conflict of interest when you have the metro district managing a project? But the Arta, you know, how do you do the joint management of projects? And how do we define?
Yeah.
When it's fair, when you have a six lane road, what is, like, how do you determine that you're only paying for three and not for the private sectors four, you know?
And so a- again, that happens at the uh at the board level first, um to determine what the percentage is of that roadway. So the Board of Directors um originally set what that is, and then it goes to each of the governing bodies for concurrence. And so that that gets approved. It's it's not, so the board really sets up the percentage. Um the project list comes before each of the boards. As as far as um conflicts of interest, again, now having, you know, over ten or almost ten developments that are a part of it. Expanding from three thousand acres to seven thousand acres, um really, we're kind of out of that. You know, kind of baby side of things where it was all around one development and there could be questions of of conflict. Now it's outside of that. So it's much bigger now. Um so I think that addresses it. Um the other thing we do on the just design and construction side and construction management. So getting into the management side you were asking, um like currently, we have, if you look at the projects that are under construction. Um thirty eighth Avenue um connecting on to the uh, so we'll start with the thirty eighth Avenue um. E four seventy interchange, which is open. That was Artis' first big opening project. Uh that was designed by um. No, uh F H U and constructed by Kiwi. The section that ties from um E four seventy back to Piccadilly is was designed by uh H R Green. And is being constructed by H E I. Forty eighth Avenue that just went to construction was designed by A E Com and is being constructed by Mid City. Um the interchange down at I seventy is designed by Aegis and is being constructed by um Ames. And so you can see that um it's, everything we do is a public process. Now, the one thing that we did early on. And it was probably mistaken, there's two schools of thought on it, I'll tell you. Uh both when I was in government and and in the private sector, you know, there's always this debate and and engineers will give you the debate on both sides of it. Depending on how it fits them that day. Um and that is, you know, it's better to have a design firm manage the construction that they designed. And there's efficiencies in that. And then there's the school of thought, C dot takes this approach, which is that if you've designed it, we'll bring somebody else in to manage the project. At first, we um on the first couple of projects, we did have the design firm, A E Com, on um like on forty eighth. Manage the construction. Um what we found is, we really wanted to go more of the C dot version of that. And so now we've implemented that if if you've designed it, we use a different firm to construction manage. And then, of course, it goes to a public bid for um for the construction company. And so. Again, those are all checks and balances to make sure that the design firms are um, you know, uh are giving us competitive. On, even though it's a professional service, we still competitively look at those on a qualification basis. Um on the the C M side, we're making sure that it's not the same firm. And then on the construction side, that goes out to a public bid. Um with the construction manager evaluating um and making a recommendation. And then on the construction side, that goes out to a public bid, um, with the construction manager evaluating, um, and making a recommendation. Then we have, I guess I should add one word to that. Then we have a company was uh, it's getting, now it's Con- Connects, Connects. Who's, who's an independent engineer who evaluates all the pay applications to ensure that. Um, all the improvements that we received, what, what was on the payout, so what the contractor says they built actually was built. And that it was a public expense and then certifies that to the Art of Board for Pay. And so that'd be another check that we have.
So the ratios of this is the ratio, how much should be paid? So if we're doing a road here, they're like, they verified that. We're paying only, Art is paying its only, its share that it should and not letting private sector or. Uh, uh, the other partners, I should not say private sector, but, but metro district are somewhat private sector in a way. Um. Pay too much. And that's, that's, it makes sure everyone's fair.
Yeah, and that actually goes through about three layers of that verification on the cost verification side, so it gets verified at the construction management level. Um, and then it goes to the program management level, and Stave, and then it goes on up to the um. The district has its own cost verific- verification process and then, and then there's a separate report that's generated for, for Arda as well to verify. Just what Steve was saying is to ensure that if, if the roadways are fifty fifty split, then it actually was fifty fifty. And also to pull out any development cost, um, that would been associated not with the roadway. And so those could be enhanced landscape, so those get pulled out, a hundred percent of that goes to the development side, not to Arda. Uh, if there's water and sewer, uh, storm sewer is part of the road, so that is included in Art's share, um, whatever the breakdown is. But if there's a water line to serve a development, Arda does not participate in the water line. If there's a sewer line that goes in there. We don't participate in the sanitary sewer as well. And so those items get pulled out, and then even though we might have a fifty fifty split with an adjacent property. It's fifty fifty split on the roadway cost. Um, and then those additional are a hundred percent towards uh, the development. Again, the thought is that development pays its own way and that we're building the regional component.
That was a fantastic overview. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, not only the recommendation, as I, as I see an exit for me at some point, is just to make sure that. It is like a public-private partnership. We just always stay on top of it. And it's just, make sure that any question you have. The team is really good at answering questions, so don't be afraid to ask. And, and ask it from the standpoint of, how do I make sure that I'm asking the tough question that someone can't say that I didn't ask the tough questions, you know? And so by going in, protecting the public as much as possible. I have found that these guys have been like, oh, that's a good question, I'm glad you're closing the loop on that, so we don't have something hanging out there that might appear to be. And so we do a lot of things like clarifying on the record on stuff and asking those questions. And I think that's important because this is a fairly unique situation. And if we don't, and we need staff also, and they have in the past, make sure that they feel comfortable to tell us, hey, we might need to look at this. And every time we've had that, uh, over the last couple of years, it's been like, oh, and we answer it. But um, that's my only recommendation is just get to, get to know these folks and ask the right questions. And Hopper will always bird dog it because he doesn't want anything negative hanging out there. Uh, but he's also like, oh, that's a good point, and let's talk about how to implement that process. Or let's talk about maybe we, is it time for us to do, put our contracts out for renewal on a bid, maybe, you know? And he's been very open to, to those conversations and just remember, we're forty percent of that board. You have every right to ask as many questions and, and bring them up as much as possible.
Okay.
And I thank you guys. Do you have anything?
I have a, a fun fact since I work in budget. Uh, so the general fund contribution this year is just about one point five million dollars. And the Road and Bridge Fund contribution is a hundred and seventy grand. So just to lay that in there, and it will, it will grow obviously, but that's where we're at right now.
Say that one more time, what are they again?
One point five million from the general fund and a hundred and seventy thousand from.
For this year or for last year?
Twenty twenty five.
Twenty twenty five, thank you.
And, and, and I would just add to that, you know, how, you, you might ask yourself, well, how, how did we come up with that formula? And um, and so Kristen and I, and when she was here.
I take your credit.
First time, yeah, but, but we, we spent probably six months or so.
I'm gonna use hours as the metric, which is a bit scary.
And, and so um, you know, it, it's funny, I was on autopilot and I hadn't been here in a while and my car just drives here. And uh, we would sit down in a conference room downstairs and, and we would bring in different people from, from the county. To go through budget to really identify in an incorporated area, what is the dollar that is collected? What is needed to sustain the, uh, the county services and then what might be available for um. To fund these types of improvements. And so it was um, no, no one just arbitrarily picked a number. And so there was a lot of science that went behind the, the facts on that and thank you for all your hard work and, and others, Ben and, and, and others back in the day and just. Digging through all that information to really come up with a number that could be sustainable as we move into the future.
I think that's important to note that it's not a hundred percent of the increment, or the actual revenue, I should say, not increment, it's a revenue. Right? And, and I think it's important because we're having the same conversation about when we're presented like with a downtown, so. Downtown Development Association or in a U R A, do we, do we need to, should, does it make sense to negotiate that they don't take the full? Whole piece of the pot, the full pie, because we will have, as Matt alluded to, there will be expenditures. That the county takes on with development and that we have to be able to keep up with it, because if not, then it becomes outdated. And all those burdens that come with that development are now a hundred percent on the back, you know, as it grows. So if we do it the right way, like we did here, as you still have fifty percent, we're still making money, but it covers a lot of those expenses for the development that are associated. So we might have other situations like to, downtown developments and U R As that we've been gonna say, we should negotiate that it's not a hundred percent of that.
Yeah, you know, one, one of the other things that we looked at on that, um, when we were back and kind of going through that, all that, that. I won't call it brain damage, but felt like it at the time, um, was that, you know, really looking at that other fifty. Not looking at the fifty that was being contributed, but you know, how, how do we create the fifty? And um, and we ran some models that showed that if development occurred as normal development would, right? Building those incremental roads, that um, most of this land would develop. Cause that, that's always what someone, oh, it's gonna develop regardless if you build this or not. True. What we found was, there was like an eighty, eighty-seven year, exactly, I remember the number, eighty-seven years for build out. Versus this was, you know, pouring gasoline on the fire here. And to, to have it built out in, you know, in half that time, right? Or even less than that, like thirty years built out. And so, um, and then the value of, of that, even that fifty percent. You know, over that period of time was a great value too. Um, and so.
Yeah, we, uh, just to bring back sort of the analysis that was done, we had lots of additional outside consulting help advising us. Um, so.
Now you're admitting you were involved?
It's a chapter of my life that I've sort of forgotten about, but um.
Purpose.
Coming back to me now. I mean, Economic and Planning Systems is a consultant that we've used a number of times at the county. And they have, you know, an excellent reputation in doing this kind of analysis. And so the finance department and the, then planning department. Um, heavily utilize some outside expertise to supplement some of our own internal analysis to just. Help support the commissioner's decision to go down this path. And so we did put a lot of rigor and. Detailed study into our cost to serve development that occurs inside of municipal boundaries. And making sure that we were still gonna be covered.
We brought in outside legal counsel too, you've probably heard of T. Weiser, he was attorney, because this was new to us, right? We hadn't done these kind of uh, regional agreements before. So it was a, it was a new undertaking for all of us.
And, you know, and I, I used to say, you know, uh, Steve, Steve asked, and I give him a lot of credit. Asked a lot of tough questions back in those days and, and, and uh, we, we went round and round a few times, but um. But you know, I, I, I think that it ended up better because of that, right? I mean, we were very thorough, we were very deliberate. Um, the, the board today should, should feel comfortable in the fact that, that we went through that process to get there. Um, and you know, it's, it's interesting though, because. You know, it, it was either going to, we were gonna ask the tough questions and, and it was gonna fail and, but we would know that it was gonna fail. Or we were gonna ask the tough questions, we were going to adapt it and it was gonna be very successful, and I think that's what it ended up to be. It's interesting, because every now and then you'll, you'll hear someone say, oh, yeah, we're, we're doing a regional transportation authority up here, and it's that, they're not. You know, they're, they're uh, a couple of metropolitan districts coming together and throwing, you know, um, to build, you know. Very little infrastructure and, and only to serve themselves, right? Versus really making those regional uh, connections. Um, it really is gonna lift up this entire area. And it's gonna continue to lift it up all the way up, um, throughout this corridor. Because of forward planning, which has been, been very helpful. Uh, you know, one of the things that we did in our last projects list is again, we only used the five mills as I talked about. Did not, we used the counties to, to be able to pay the debt off faster. And uh, and then the city put in some of the use tax and fees for um, some, they identified some gap projects. And so those were areas along the existing corridors where there was no one responsible. So there might be, Excel Energy might own both sides of the road, so they're never going to develop. So now you have this corridor that's being built and there's no one to make the connection in between. And we've all driven on those roads, we're like. Why is this half mile not done? And so identifying those corridors and how we make those connections and being deliberate about how we, how we make the connections. I think is part of the success of Art.
I think this is also part of why we're so defensive about when the state. Or the Denver Boulder Centers of Power in the state try to hinder us from development and growth. It doesn't mean that we need to be unfettered in our growth of those screen filled areas, low, places like this. But it means that we need to commit to doing it in a smart, efficient and effective manner, but also be careful about, like. This development is meeting a need and in an area that will develop. It was never designed to be just fields. So we want to be careful when some of the folks outside of our community or even legislators within our community may try to propose. Growth hindering policies that could impact things like this. Um, but that also means that, just because I say that doesn't mean I support. You see what I mean? Like, like we could do it the right way, but I also want you to know why I'm quite defensive about things when they come and say, oh. Denver Boulder says, now everyone has to do this right way. Just cause you guys have done growing doesn't mean the rest of us have to be done. But it also means that, that if, in order for us to continue growing responsibly, we do it in a responsible manner. And by planning and identifying these potential conflicts, we, meaning in design, and we can do it the right way and better. So it is a balance and uh, I just appreciate you guys coming out, but I will always say. You could be comfortable where we are now, but don't get comfortable. Like, we're judged to have that oversight, so I would just always keep pushing that, so. But thank you for everything.
You come back anytime.
Something to say, what were you gonna say?
It's gonna supplement what you said. I mean, I know Art has participated in some of the interchange. Design and construction along I seventy and is still subject to a lot of those T D M requirements that C dot's put in place for new interchanges. And so there are um, those principles incorporated to projects that Art participates in. So just because it's out here doesn't mean it's exempt from some of those principles of transportation planning and incorporating. Multiple modes and um, ride sharing, car sharing, all of those strategies that you have to have now. In order to get a new interchange approved on any um, state highway. So I know they've probably been through the wringer on some of that stuff, but um. There are ways to do that even with creative tools like this and even outside of the existing urban um, environment.
We did, we, we were um.
Sorry for another day.
We did get pulled into that. We may or may not have been asked to, hey, can, we got a full agenda, can you guys wait till uh. You know, next month and come before the Transportation Commission? Yes, we can do that. Oh, by the way, in between, we're gonna change our policy. But, but I think it's been successful in the T, T D M world. Um, Arda does operate a um. An on-demand shuttle service, um, that serves this area. Uh, it really helps to, to move people both to um, retail corridors. As well as um, over to um, the A line, so that there's the R T D stations. So I think that's been very successful as well. So wh- while, while it wasn't a planned expenditure as part of the interchange, I, I think it's still, it's, it's been a successful one. Really helped out the area.
Thank you, okay, great, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you, Matt. Nice to meet you, Dave. Thanks, Mark.
Ready?
Now, hi, Taylor. I was all prepared to fill in for Chase, which is why I'm sitting up here thinking he wasn't going to be here. But, um, brand new dad for the second time decided he would spend time with her today. So, absolutely.
So, as you all remember, we were here a few weeks ago to talk through our private activity bonds. And there were several questions from the board and requests for additional information. So, we're really here today just to follow up on that same conversation. Also happy to report that we have some additional individuals joining us today. So, we have Andrew Chappin from Maker to talk through the Maker application request as well as virtually, we have Patrick Berry and Nicholas Bohm from Related. So, they're up in the ceiling right now, willing to, able to provide some additional context information on their projects as well. So, as the board will probably remember, we had quite a few present or quite a few items to discuss with you when we discussed back in July. So, we had a request for, a request for the 2023-2024 PAB allocations as well as what we initially were planning on coming forward, which was the 2025 PAB allocation. So, for 2023 and 2024, the board did give us concrete direction to move forward with reallocating those unused portions of the funds to the Uplands Maker Affordable Housing Project or other Adams County approved PAB projects. So, that is already underway. We're not going to address that anymore today. So, today's focus will be entirely on the 2025 private activity bond allocation. Just a quick recap, some of the specific things that the board had asked to hear more about was potentially whether or not the PAB could be used for the community safety while being asset development programs. So, we'll touch on that as well as more information on the capital stacks for each of the projects. And also, and as well as are there any alternative funding sources for some of the projects that we're talking about? So, those are the primary focus of today's conversation. Last, last time we were here, we, we didn't provide a ton of information on the background and we ended up having a pretty thorough conversation. So, I did provide some additional background information. We'll just touch on this high level because a lot of this was already said. But again, private activity bonds are a special class of tax exempt bonds that benefit private, private borrower, private borrowers because they are tax exempt. So, these types of bonds can be issued by states, local governments, or housing authorities. And are really are authorized by the IRS. That gives the ability for this program. The PAB capacities are allocated to state and local issuers. And state and local issuers as well as housing authorities are the only ones that are able to actually issue the private activity bond capacity. Again, these are, are bonds as, or essentially debt. These are not, don't have a direct cash balance, a direct funding source in that sense. But it is, it provides for borrowing, for specific eligible projects. As a reminder, PAB do have a specific expiration date and must be issued the same year. There is a caveat and allowance for if, if they are issued in the same year, there is the ability to roll that forward for three years. So, while we say they are required in that first year, there is a path forward to basically. That's why we were talking about the 2324. Again, kind of already touched on this about who can issue a PAB. So, essentially, local issuers, which is state, county, cities, or housing authorities can issue as well as they can be assigned to other local issuers. That's what we've done in the past when the county has assigned our PAB allocation to Maker as the housing authority has the ability to issue private activity bonds. Also, CHAF, CHAF is another option. So, if we wanted to, we could assign our PAB capacity to CHAF and CHAF can issue those bonds as well. And then lastly, if we were to do nothing, and September 5th, sorry, September 15th deadline rolls around, our PAB capacity would automatically roll into DOL's statewide balance. So, if we did absolutely nothing, that capacity wouldn't be lost, which it would be, it would not be available to make any decisions with it. So, we certainly think how we have a number of opportunities that we'd like to pursue. So, we're not, we're not recommending that in any way, but that is what would happen if we weren't to make any sort of formal action by September 15th. And this is the last kind of background slide that I'm going through rather quickly. Again, typically what we've done in the past for the county is, is use our private activity bonds to support multifamily housing projects. This slide here shows the types of eligible projects. I started the top two because again, multifamily is what we've typically done. However, in our last conversation, we talked a lot about down payment assistance. So, single family mortgage revenue bonds can also be issued to support down payment assistance. And that is one of the things that CHAF actually does specifically. Okay, now we're getting into some new information. So, again, last time we were here, there was some conversation and questions around the county's asset development program that has started moving along. So, I'll touch on this information. I believe Matt is here if there's questions.
I think he's over there.
He's over there. So, this information I got from Matt and his team. So, I'll do my best, but if I can't answer it, I'll certainly turn it over for more information. But Brothers Redevelopment was awarded for
Ready?
No.
Hi, Taylor. I was all prepared to fill in for Chase, which is why I'm sitting up here thinking he wasn't going to be here. But, um, brand new dad for the second time decided he would spend time with her today, so.
Absolutely. So as you all remember, we were here a few weeks ago to talk through our private activity bonds. There were several questions from the board and requests for additional information. So we're really here today just to follow up on that same conversation. Also happy to report that we have some additional individuals joining us today. So we have Andrew Chappin from Maker to talk through the Maker application request. As well as virtually, we have Patrick Berry and Nicholas Bohm from Related. So they're up in the ceiling right now, willing to, able to provide some additional context information on their projects as well. So, um, as the board will probably remember, we had quite a few present or quite a few items to discuss with you when we discussed back in July. So we had a request for, uh, request for the 2023, 2024 PAB allocations, as well as what we initially were planning on coming forward, which was the 2025 PAB allocation. So for 2023 and 2024, the board did give us concrete direction to move forward with reallocating those unused portions of the funds to the Uplands Maker Affordable Housing Project or other Adams County approved PAB projects. So that is already underway. We're not going to address that anymore today. So today's focus will be entirely on the 2025 private activity bond allocation. Just a quick recap, some of the specific things that the board had asked to hear more about was potentially whether or not the PAB could be used for the community safety while being asset development programs. So we'll touch on that, um, as well as more information on the capital stacks for each of the projects. And alter, and as well as are there any alternative funding sources for some of the projects that we're talking about? So those are the primary focus of today's conversation. Last, last time we were here, we, we didn't provide a ton of information on the background and we ended up having a pretty thorough conversation. So I did provide some additional background information. We'll just touch on this high level because a lot of this was already said. But again, private activity bonds are a special class of tax exempt bonds that benefit private, uh, private borrower, private borrowers because they are tax exempt. So these types of bonds can be issued by states, local governments, or housing authorities. And are really are authorized by the IRS. That gives the ability for this program. The, the PAB capacities are allocated to state and local issuers. And state and local issuers, as well as housing authorities, are the only ones that are able to actually issue the private activity bond capacity. Again, these are, are bonds as, or essentially debt. These are not, don't have a direct cash balance. The direct funding source in that sense, but it is, it provides for borrowing. It's a big eligible projects. Um, as a reminder, PAB do have a specific expiration date and must be issued the same year. There is a caveat and allowance for if, if they are issued in the same year, there is the ability to roll that forward for three years. So while we say they are required in that first year, there is a path forward to basically. That's why we were talking about the 23, 24. Uh, again, kind of already touched on this about who can issue PABs. So essentially, local issuers, which is state, county, cities, or housing authorities can issue, as well as they can be assigned to other local issuers. That's what we've done in the past when the county has assigned our PAB allocation to Maker as the housing authority, has the ability to issue private activity bonds. Also CHAF, CHAF is another option. So, uh, if we wanted to, we could assign our PAB capacity to CHAF and CHAF can issue those bonds as well. And then lastly, if we were to do nothing in September 15th, sorry, September 15th, deadline rolls around, um, our PAB capacity would automatically roll into DOLA's statewide balance. So if we did absolutely nothing, that capacity wouldn't be lost, which it would be, it would not be available to make any decisions with it. So, uh, we certainly think how we have a number of opportunities that we'd like to pursue. So we're not, we're not recommending that in any way, but that is what would happen if we weren't to make any sort of formal action by September 15th. Uh, and this is the last kind of background slide that I'm going through rather quickly. Again, typically what we've done in the past for the county is, is use our private activity bonds to support, um, uh, multifamily housing projects. This slide here, uh, shows the types of eligible projects. I started the top two because again, multifamily is what we've typically done. However, in our last conversation, we talked a lot about down payment assistance. So single family mortgage revenue bonds can also be issued to support down payment assistance. And that is one of the things that CHAF actually does specifically. Okay, now we're getting into some new information. So again, last time we were here, uh, there was some conversation and questions around the county's asset development program that, uh, as, has, has started. So I'll touch on this information. I believe Matt is here if there's questions.
I think he's over there.
He's over there. So, um, this information I got from Matt and his team. So I'll do my best, but if I can't answer it, I'll certainly turn it over for more information. But Brothers Redevelopment was awarded $466,900 of ARPA funds to create this asset development pilot program back in 2024. This program works by, uh, creating individual development accounts and provides matched funds for funds that are saved. So participants have up to 24 months to save a thousand dollars with a match of nine to one. So if a participant were to save a thousand dollars, they would get an additional match of nine thousands for a total of $10,000 that could go towards, uh, an eligible use. There are different timeline, uh, timing requirements. So participants are required to save for at least six months. And so because this program launched in February of 2025, actually fifth month is the first month that a participant could potentially be receiving, receiving these funds. When I spoke to CSWB at that time last month, uh, no one had received any new funding. That wasn't possible because no one could have actually gotten six months yet. So as of, as of at least about a week or two ago, uh, the full $466,900 was still eligible in, in that program because no funds had been distributed, uh, yet to date. There are income eligibility requirements and a minimum age. And at the end of the day, the asset development program has three general uses, which is those funds that if they are matched and provided, could be used for down payment assistance, business startup or education. And again, CSWB is the lead on that program. So if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to turn it over.
So like, we've already given them.
We have provided $466,900 to Brothers Redevelopment who is running the program. Brothers Redevelopment has kicked off the program. And so there are, I don't know how the exact number of the number of, of participants. Participants have to save for a minimum of six months. That six months since we kicked off in February is just now hitting in, in August. So I'll say theoretically, if a participant had saved a thousand dollars required over the past six months, they started in February and they have saved a thousand dollars. I guess by the end of this month, they would be eligible to receive the $9,000 of, of match to go towards one of the three allowed pieces. When we had our last conversation, that just hasn't happened yet because, uh, the timing hasn't, hasn't hit yet. The program hasn't been an exception.
We have several people in the pipeline right now working for that. And a few have actually already demonstrated they've reached the threshold of savings. But they have to sustain that for that period of time. Because really this is also about developing, um, new habits, behaviors and financial ability going forward. So it's not meant to be, you achieve the, the thousand dollar savings, you automatically qualify. There's a set of courses and resources that they have to go through in order to become eligible. So we have folks that are in, in the, the works and we can give you those, uh, details. But I, I believe we also sent up a memo a few weeks back that outlined exactly what asset development is. So we could all, we could also bring that back to the top of your email box if you need.
Thank you. Okay. Can you just very briefly just define asset development? I, I see the slides here in my email and I know that you sent something out, but just for the public, so we're all on the same page.
So the asset development is really intended to close the gap, um, for, you know, generational wealth. And so one of the biggest things that we can do is to develop an individual's ability, whether it comes through their own ability in higher education, entrepreneurial ship or homeownership. So those are some of the main factors in which you can really change the, shift the paradigm in terms of generational wealth and growing that, uh, over time. And so this program is established to provide an avenue for individuals to gain access to either that homeownership, business ownership or higher education.
Thank you. That is very helpful. Appreciate that.
So with that in mind, we did reach out to Maker to see if there is an appetite or an ability, uh, capacity to issue private activity bonds to support down payment assistance in 2025. And again, we're moving the timeline here is very short. We have to make a decision by September 15th of this year. And in our conversations with Maker, uh, it was determined that there really wasn't capacity to, to do this on such a short timeline. Certainly we could, I think there's two avenues to explore for 2026 is whether or not Maker has, has capacity for 2026 to issue. Cause again, this would be a different, uh, this would be a different type of bond activity that would have to be issued. Going back to the slides that had the three, or sorry, five. So this would be single family mortgage revenue bonds that are being issued as opposed to affordable housing, multifamily, how, uh, sorry, affordable multifamily housing bonds, which is what we typically, and what Maker has typically been doing. So because of the changes and the different nuances of the program, that's going to take time to figure out. So for 2025, that's not, I mean, that is, is feasible, given our time constraint for 2026. Again, we can explore whether or not Maker could have the capacity for that. Or again, the county technically legally can be the issuer. That's not something we've historically done. And if we were to pursue that, we would definitely need some external, um, professional assistance in exploring that. But again, that's something we could definitely explore for 2026. And I want to pause here and have some conversation on this. But two of the, two of the main points that I do want to provide is if down payment assistance is something that the board wants to support. And I can certainly understand why it is an important thing that is needed in the community. A portion or all of our private activity bond capacity can be allocated to CHAF. Because as I mentioned, CHAF already does, uh, provide down payment assistance using private activity bonds. The way CHAF's contracts work, and we actually did this, uh, when I was the city of Westminster. CHAF actually will, their contract is worded in a way that essentially says they will endeavor to do their best efforts for up to a year to use the private activity bond capacity within that jurisdiction. So they don't guarantee that it will be used. Their sort of guiding light is they want to make sure the money gets spent, um, in a timely manner. They do everything they can to try to take those resources and spend them in the jurisdiction, if the jurisdiction decides to award them to CHAF.
Julie, okay. Thank you. This is helpful. So Maker can't do this today. Do you want to speak to that?
Slide 13. We should look at slide six and 13 together.
So yes, I would, I would agree. And the last thing I want to say is, because again, the board asked for, is there alternative sources of funding? So just a couple of examples and a couple of existing sources for down.
Counting on the private activity bonds to complete the affordable housing projects they have committed to us and to the community.
Yes, and we will absolutely get to that. But I did also want to let the board know that there are three, more than three, but there are, here are three examples of existing down payment assistance programs. So Prop 123, which we're all very familiar with, did provide additional down payment assistance. That's, that's administered through DOLA. So that does provide first time home buyers, uh, with down payment assistance through non-forgivable loans. Again, CHAF provides down payment, uh, assistance grants that is using private activity bonds, uh, that either awarded by the state or that are awarded by, uh, other jurisdictions. And then lastly, Colorado Housing Assistance Corporation also provides down payment assistance, um, through loans. So those are just three examples. So again, I want to be very clear on, um, on this slide is that it does not seem feasible at this point to pursue down payment assistance with our 2025 allocation. We can certainly talk about 2026 if that's the desire of the board. And as far as this sort of call out box here, as far as, you know, we certainly have the ability to provide some of our, some or all of our private activity bond capacity to CHAF for down payment assistance support. That would be at the expense of being able to award those same private activity bonds to the Maker and related projects that we're going to be getting to in the future slides. So I don't need a firm answer right now on whether we all are some to CHAF versus the related and Maker projects. But I do think it'd be helpful just briefly to talk through expectations for 2026. Cause if we're going to, if we were going to explore that as, as Adams County being the issuer, we're definitely going to have to bring in some, some outside assistance to explore that as it's an area of expertise that we just don't have in-house.
Okay. So staying on this slide here, yes, there are existing down payment assistant programs. Do we know how many Adams County residents, families were able to take advantage of any of these programs?
I don't have, I don't have those specific numbers. I can tell you, um, just from past experience, when, uh, working at the city of Westminster and, and the city at certain years when we didn't have a project such as Makers or Related, uh, projects that they're presenting today, we certainly had done this. And in the past, the amount that was, uh, summarized at the end of the year, in every case that I can recall exceeded the amount that we awarded. So essentially we got more than a, say a hundred percent because they're, uh, CHAF is going to be providing these bonds. It's really providing additional support service to their overall program. I wouldn't say that they, it's, so it's providing additional capacity. It's not saying that they're necessarily going out and doing additional marketing to Westminster or an incorporated Adams County. But it does, it, it supports their overall program. The overall program is already providing support.
So I realized when, when you all had this conversation the first time around, I don't believe Commissioner Pinter was here and I wasn't here either. But I think you may recall, we did go through that two years, I believe, during our collective time at Westminster. The entirety of Westminster's PAB allocation, which was roughly the same as what the county gets, was fully expended on Westminster residents. So very good reason to think if we were doing that, that it would manage to be, um, contained within Adams County. But importantly, even if the board were to decide, no, we want to put our PAB allocation to projects, it does not preclude Adams County residents or yes, from applying to CHAF for the program. And it will still exist with the larger state pool of funds. So it still remains an available resource.
Okay. I think what I'm really just trying to understand here is, yes, we can't put our PAB dollars towards, you know, down payment assistance in 2025 and we could explore 2026. But, and I appreciate that there's other, you know, organizations doing this work. But, you know, owning a home is one of the best ways of building generational wealth. A lot of the projects that Makers creating don't include homeownership, correct? So like, if we really want to build generational wealth, we should be supporting programs like this. And that's why I'm curious, how many Adams County residents are currently already getting this down payment assistance? And is there a gap in, um, in, in what we could be offering? If we look at changing the way that we issue these PABs moving forward is, so just trying to think about what that looks like moving forward. Because at the end of the day, owning that home really uplifts your family. Like, I don't, I don't think any of these other programs could have that type of impact on a family. So I don't know. I'd really love to figure out how we could, um, increase opportunities for Adams County residents to obviously purchase a home and most importantly, stay here in Adams County. Once you have that home, it's a family asset moving forward. So it's really important to have.
I think we can reach out to CHAF and see if they can break down the data in that way that we can let you all know how much it's been utilized by Adams County. And I, I think maybe the critical question today is just whether or not this is an effective funding source to achieve that goal. We definitely have the ability to look at our CDBG funds and others as ways, as, as well as Matt's, um, team's program on the asset development. Yeah. Not diminishing the value of mortgage assistance or down payment assistance program, but what's the best funding source to deploy to make sure that we're meeting needs?
Well, and what I heard from you, and what I've heard from Maker is that they are in support of this effort as well. They just couldn't turn it around in the timeframe that we offered to them. And so I think that we have a conversation with them about what is administering this kind of down payments assistance look like? And what programs are, because they are doing some work and it's escaping me at the moment, like what they're doing right now that is helping with down payment assistance. But I do know that they, uh, are interested in supporting this in going forward and with their current work. And so that, doing that collaborative thing, I think could be really powerful.
Yeah. And, or do we look at doing this just as Adams County?
They are our housing authority of record though.
Yes.
But you're right.
They are, but we could do this as well.
Yeah.
If we wanted to. I'm going to hop in here and then I see Matt in the back, um, front and back. I don't know. Room we're in here, um. I feel like there needs to be, thank you for, first of all, for providing the other assistant programs, down payment assistant programs. I think that's really helpful. Um, I feel like we've been at this crossroads before and I don't recall if it's this particular program where the clock has run out and we're not, and we're not able to flip the funds to program the funding. So it is the highest and best use for our residents. And so I know Maker has their hands in a lot of pots. I, I agree with, um, Commissioner Molika is that building that generational wealth. You know, we heard from a number of nonprofits this morning is how do we get our residents from rental assistance, mortgage assistance, to stable housing, to homeownership? And so I don't know all of the, that, that pathway, what that looks like and who is in that space. Are we in that space? Do we, do we have others in the space doing the work for us? So I feel like I need the whole spectrum of how do we make this happen? And I'm not getting that complete answer. So. And I think it's really important, like what Maker's vision is. I'm not on the Maker board. And if Maker's unable to do it, what do we do as Adams County in order for this to come to fruition? So I think that that's something that I would like to explore. So first of all, knowing, so we know where the gaps are, right? So if we don't know where the gaps are on this, and then how, how are we, is it us? Is there, you know, people in real estate, the finance folks in real estate that, lenders that do these types of programs and makes our citizens aware of that these, these options are available to them. So I'm not getting, I'm not feeling like I'm getting a complete picture on this, but I'll stay with the presentation for today.
Be really valuable. We came back in the future study session just to talk about best ways to do down payment assistance. Right? And, and that's its own conversation with a lot of potential. In the four years that I've been in front of you, I think, doing the private activity bond on the schedule, we have never not had projects in the pipeline where developers were asking for it.
Okay.
And the reason for that is, um, then state of Colorado's structure, right? The state has the 4% low income housing tax credit awards to, to give out. That goes through CHAF. Those have to be paired with private activity bonds. So the reason that this is the way it usually comes before you is that relationship between private activity bond capacity, low income housing tax credits. And the rest of this presentation is really talking about projects in the pipeline that have that 4% li tech credit. We only get a little over seven million of annual bond capacity. So if we were receiving a larger volume, we might be able to do all of those things very easily. But typically it has been, no, the projects we have in the pipeline can make full use of Adams County's portion of bond capacity. So, and Andrew's probably a good one.
I think it would be helpful, once we get to the capital stack slide, Andrew has some good information about why PABs are necessary for the 4% deals and there's a proportion that's needed. So if we can hold off on.
Leveraging that other state money.
Yeah. If we can hold off on, on that point for just a moment until we get to that phase, I think that would be very helpful to actually see it visually and understand it.
Okay. Before we move on, do you want to?
I just wanted to make sure in case it wasn't intuitive that, um, the program, the, the asset development program and the CHAF down payment assistance, assistance program, they can work in concert with one another. So you actually can apply for and be eligible for the CHAF down payment assistance and also our asset development program. And primarily because we know it's still very cost prohibitive and we are trying to remove barriers to gaining that, that, uh, key asset for that generational law. So I just wanted to make sure those.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You can do, that's a 3%. And also, huh? You could do the 3% from the assistance and then also get, save the thousand dollars and then have 10,000 to add to that.
Correct.
And now you're talking like, I mean, now you're, I mean, that difference could make or break $500 a month difference at least. And, and just the cost of mortgage. I mean, I'm, I'm, I pulled up a mortgage calculator trying to understand like, like, like how much the, this stuff. I mean, people are paying 2,500 or $3,000 a month right now for rent. If they could do that and be built owning, like it changes their lives for generations.
And the asset development program goes down to 80% AMI. And it was for that reason, it was really to get those folks that are nearing that independence, or that financial independence and pushing them over the threshold. And so again, uh, the additional, uh, requirement through asset development though, is that financial literacy and that training and that component that really lends to the long-term viability, sustainability of that individual or family.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. All right. We'll, we'll continue from here. And like I said, we can circle back as well. But I just wanted to have a, I did want to pause here because down payment is a little bit different than the rest of the presentation. So like I said, we'll, we'll circle back at the end to kind of wrap this section up as well.
Right. This is just a high level reminder of what the 2025 PAB application looks like for Adams County. I would like to make a verbal amendment. Uh, the assignment deadline is actually September 15th, not September 30th. So we are, are running short on time on getting everything done here. The three LOIs we've received for 2025, Squire Village, The Wellby and Dawson Square. Each of those projects rested the full allocation and we'll go in a little bit more detail. And then the developers will, um, provide information on the capital stacks for each of the projects. And then the developers will um provide information on the capital stacks for each of the projects. Squire Village is located in Northland. Uh, we're leaving Affordable, who is virtually online with us today, requested the full PAB allocation uh for acquisition and renovation of this project. It was built in nineteen eighty two. Um, it houses fifty one senior residents at or below sixty percent AMI. This is actually a section eight property in in the city of Northland. Um, so it has a little bit of a different financing structure than the new developments have. A Maker would serve as the bond issuer. We have been in conversation with both Related and Maker and they agree that they can make this work together um in unison with each other and figure out exactly how to to balance the twenty twenty five PAB if the board were to award to both projects. Improvements is really just looking at comprehensive infrastructure updates internally, externally um to make the the asset long term um sustainable longer. And with that, I'm gonna pass to Patrick Berry. Hopefully y'all can hear us here to discuss the capital stack for the project.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me. I hope you can all hear me. Great. And I apologize for not being there in person. I had the opportunity to go uh meet with the team a few months ago. And we've been in dialogue on Squire Village as well as a couple other projects for several months. So excited to be able to introduce myself and and the work that we're doing in Adams County. So just talking through the capital stack here, and there were a couple of comments made earlier that that alluded to this. But uh with the passage of the reconciliation bill at the beginning of July, there was a big change in the tax exempt bond world and in the four percent low income housing tax credit world. And that big change was that uh prior to the passage of that reconciliation bill, in order to qualify for the four percent low income housing tax credit, fifty percent of your eligible basis or your total development costs, for lack of a better term, needed to be financed with private activity bonds in order to qualify for the four percent low income housing tax credit. Post passage of the reconciliation bill, that threshold has fallen to twenty five percent, which is a huge change in the world of of preservation and affordable housing preservation. So I I just offer that as context for the capital stack here. There have been some moving pieces on this as this legislation uh has has become codified. What we show here is a tax exempt bond amount that contemplates a full award of Adams County's PAB. I think it's important to note uh when I met uh with the team several months ago, one of the first things that we discussed on all of the projects that we we talked about was the importance of local support. So in the, over the past six months, I have been out in Colorado every other month. Um, I'm based in Boston and uh have really had a grassroots approach to not only this project, but a a number of other projects I'm working on in Adams County to develop local support for what we're doing. So the way that that has been reflected uh in the case of Squire Village has been via a two point four million dollar bond award from the city of Northland, which is really exciting. Uh, we're, we're proud to be able to uh partner with the city in that capacity. And with an award of Adams County bonds, we qualify for that threshold that allows us to go and apply to CHAF for the four percent tax credit equity. So I, I think, again, piggybacking on the prior conversation and all the different uses for these private activity bonds. This was kind of alluded to earlier, but the power of using the private activity bonds in this capacity is our ability to use in a a very scarce Adams County resource, the private activity bonds, and essentially leverage those bonds to bring in, in this case, eight million dollars of tax credit equity to a project located in Adams County. So the bonds, right, it's seven, seven and a half million of bonds that we are leveraging through the program, through the low income housing tax credit program to create another eight million dollars of investment into the property. So I think that's a a really important aspect of the low income housing tax credit program and and that is reflected in the capital stack here as well. Other sources here, there, there's a deferred fee, right, that the developer, we are leaving in the capital stack a a fee that will serve as a source to the project and then our income during construction. Uh, you have our renovation budget here broken up by hard costs and soft costs, financing. Um, and the rest is pretty self explanatory. But I, I think that the the key here from our perspective is that we have heard uh the team loud and clear and the importance of uh securing local support for the project. We have done that here. We presented another project that's actually on the agenda today. Dawson Square that is in unincorporated Adams County and we're really excited to share that we are not asking for Adams County PAB for that project because we were able to secure an award from the city of Thornton that allows us to enact a really meaningful uh preservation of that property in unincorporated Adams County. We've also received an award from the city of Aurora for another project that's located in Adams County. So we have been uh extremely thoughtful and extremely uh proactive in trying to ensure that we've covered all of our bases and are not coming to Adams County lightly uh with this request. We have been far and wide and we have told the story of of our projects to anyone that will listen, even even if it's not located in their jurisdiction. Uh, and we've, we're, we're really proud of of the support that we've been able to bring to the county and hope that uh we're able to partner with you on on this one.
Question, Patrick. Thank you for that overview. Uh, with that change in um the four percent low income tax, that fifty percent um now changed to twenty five percent, when does that start? Is that like active today? Um, or when does that transition take effect?
So it's for projects that are placed in service in twenty twenty six. It really starts next year.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, because I just wanted to calculate real quick what the threshold for this project is and we're currently at, is it forty three percent?
So we're slightly, based on the ask here, we're slightly above the threshold. And that's because really CHAF likes to see a little bit of cushion in that ask. And and part of the kind of rationale here as well is that in assigning the bonds to Maker, we have been in touch with the Maker team. Steve and I talk regularly to think about how to most efficiently kind of allocate these bonds to projects that have a a clear path to getting done. So what we're showing here, right, is that full allocation that provides a little bit of cushion on that twenty five percent test. But how this would play out in practice is that we would work with Maker to issue the minimum amount of bonds that the project needs to qualify for that tax credit.
Okay, okay, that's, that's helpful um to talk through. So you have a the, the cushion, which is, you could be at twenty five percent, but we're funding at forty three percent when we combine Adams and Northland dollars, right?
So it's not quite forty three percent. What I have here is actually, it's, it's thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
But it's not the same. The calculation on the percentage i- is um, it's not total sources that the denominator in that calculation. Um, but we're, we're right around thirty percent here showing ten million.
Okay, just curious, what is the denominator?
Sorry, can you say that again?
Just curious, what is the denominator?
O- on the twenty five percent test?
Yeah.
So it's, it's something called the aggregate bond basis. And there are certain eligible costs for that basis calculation and certain ineligible costs. But that's the denominator and happy to kind of flesh out what that breakdown is.
No, that's helpful. Thank you. Learning lots.
Any other questions for the related team?
Again, I guess it's, the way I hear about it is that you're dependent upon the, so we don't really have a choice. It's either find something else at the expense of the project. Now that's it. Like, if you don't do this, the project goes away unless they can figure out there was back to the drawing board for them to fill the gap in the stack.
Andrew, do you, can you explain how the?
We don't have choices.
So uh process works if we were to apply through the state.
Yeah, so, yeah, I get it. In the fall, there's the statewide balance application. So any of those unused bonds from other local municipalities could transfer over to the state, then we do apply. And so some years it could be twenty, thirty million available, some years it's ten million, you know, I don't, I don't know what the current balance is right now. But uh, so it is another process much like this. We apply, make the case. Um, but yes, the, the, to your point, it is uh it make or break the project. If we don't have PABs, we can't move forward because it's a federal requirement that these projects have a certain amount of PAB. Now that has come down to twenty five percent, which is helpful. Uh, but it's still a requirement that we have at least twenty five percent uh in the project.
One other point that's just worth highlighting here, I think, as it, as it relates to different projects that you'll see. As you see our sources here, this project is not contingent on any other type of soft financing source, which for projects of this nature is unique. So to to the point of of the need and and the importance of the tax exempt bonds, they, they are important and they are critical to the overall capital stack. But what is unique about this is that there is no other soft city funding, state funding that the project needs to move forward. So with this allocation, we have the sources needed to move forward in in earnest.
Just have another question and thank you, Board, just because I'm, I know my questions are a little bit off the wall, but I'm learning here. And so um Squire's Village is a privately owned what is it, building, um multi housing unit, if you will. Um, and it's uh, and it's section eight, you said, right? Section eight doesn't cover the cost of renovations, right?
Correct.
Wanna explain that?
Correct. So the, sorry, was that the full question or?
Yeah, well, I guess I'll, I'll continue here. So um section eight doesn't cover the cost of renovations. And so if the owner doesn't maintain the property, like they you lose their section eight status. So like, what happens if this, these renovations don't take place? The owner is still required to maintain those properties, correct?
Yes, so there, there are annual inspections that uh take place as a result of the subsidy contract with the federal government. So uh, yes, I think this represents a unique opportunity to recapitalize the property for the long term. Um, the, the, the minimum requirements of HUD and of the, those that go to inspect the building on a regular basis are really that it's safe, sanitary and occupied. That, that is what is the standard. What we are looking to do here is take a critical community asset that provides housing for a senior population and take it from the standard to something that that everyone's really proud of and is really a, a, a a place for everyone to age in place comfortably, not only with kind of the shelter component, but also with the non shelter component, services component that we build into to all of our, our renovation projects like this. So there's kind of a, you know, to your point, the bare minimum that is, that is needed and is often met. This project and this proposal is an opportunity to take a project that otherwise would need to see ongoing capital reinvestment, right? To maintain safe, sanitary and occupied status. But putting us and putting uh the residents in a position to really realize a a different version of this community.
Okay, so and just to clarify again here, so we're gonna put money into the renovation. So then the private owner is the one who benefits from those renovations. What if they decide to sell? Like, they can't sell? I don't know.
Touching on the affordability, Gary?
Yeah, so there, there are two uh kind of affordable affordability components to this. There's the project based section eight half contract and the HUD use agreement that actually requires uh fifty percent of AMI to qualify to live at the project. So everyone living at this project will be making fifty percent of the area median income. And those residents will be paying thirty percent of their income towards rent. And the difference between the resident portion of rent and the contract rent is subsidized by the federal government vis a vis the, the subsidy half contract. Separate to that is the affordability uh agreements that we would enter into as a result of the tax credit rehab. So that would be a thirty year use agreement that we would record in conjunction with the tax credit closing. So there's kind of two separate mechanisms here to maintain affordability. And we would be looking to renew both of those use restrictions for the maximum allowable period of time, which in the case of the HUD hap contract and use agreement is twenty years. And in the case of the tax credit use agreement, that is thirty years.
Okay, so if the owner chose to sell, those agreements would still be in place, correct? And.
Correct.
Okay. And then what if? Okay.
A- and I think it's important to note, um, Related Affordable is the largest private owner of affordable housing in the country. We have never taken a unit that is income restricted affordable and turned it into a market rate unit. So that is in no, that, that, that does not uh cross our path as a viable or potential business strategy. It has not since the inception of the firm. So just wanted to say that as well.
Yeah, well, I think I'm just trying to understand how, you know, these, you know, dollars are being reinvested into a private property and how is that gonna continue to be a community asset moving forward, right? And very familiar with Squire's Village, spent a lot of time in Northland, so um appreciate the project. Um, but just wanted to kind of clarify how that, how that works.
Totally.
Thanks, guys.
I hope I answered the question. Happy to take another stab at it.
I, I don't have any other questions personally.
Right, moving on to the Wellby. Does the board need a rundown of of this project? I think you all are very familiar. Um, so with that, I'm gonna pass to you, Andrew, to help explain the capital stack. You're gonna hear a lot of the same uh as Patrick said, but.
Yeah, very similar approach. Um, instead of a fifty one unit rehab, uh, we are doing a hundred seventeen unit new construction in the place of the old Boyer's coffee shop. So excited to have this opportunity. Um, so yeah, a lot of same types of sources. You know, there's only, there's only really only one way to do affordable housing on a larger scale and that's through the tax credit program. And so we uh as well will be using the four percent, but we will also be using the competitive state tax credit as well. So we will, uh, right now our timeline is to apply next August uh for the state tax credits and coupled with the four percent uh federal tax credits. And so again, with that comes a requirement of that now the twenty five percent test of the PABs. Uh, and so with the new construction, we have a over a fifty five million dollar project. And so our twenty five percent test with a little bit of cushion uh is now uh fourteen point four million. Uh, PAB is what we needed and we were awarded last year's PAB for this project. And so with this year's award, uh, with amount would bring us to that twenty five percent requirement that we need for this project. Yeah, I don't know if you want me to go through other line item details. Uh, most of it is construction costs at forty two million right now. That's subject to change. You know, all of these numbers are fluid until we sign uh on the, the dotted line, which would be from this point, probably two years from now, by the time we get tax credits and everything lined up. So um by the time we get it all lined up, these numbers definitely will change. Uh, we like to think sometimes they will come down, but usually they go the other way and escalate upwards. So um, that's why we need that twenty five percent, that's why we need that PAB cushion. Because there is a steep penalty if we miss that, then there's big repercussions and jeopardizes the whole project that, yeah, it, it becomes a mess. And so that's why we have that a little bit of cushion on the, on the PAB side. Uh, so we don't go sideways with that, so.
And maybe important to note, unlike the previous um capital stack where, uh, as Patrick noted, that was the only soft funds in it. You actually have tough sources.
Yeah, so we do have county home funds that have already been awarded um or dedicated to this project. Developer, deferred developer fee is very common for these types of projects. We have that as well. Uh, and then you'll notice we have a, a gap at two point four million. Again, like I said, these numbers are fluid. This is a number we live with all the time. Um, we set our, our projections very conservatively, so the interest rate is higher than we anticipate it will be, especially if they, they ever decide to cut interest rates, you know, that would come. They ever decide to cut interest rates, you know, that would come towards our favor. Uh, the tax credit equity pricing, we typically have on a conservative. And usually by the time we go out, it comes back a little bit higher. So, uh, and then there's always working with the construction team to try to. Re- rein in scope and cost. And so that's typically how we, we fill that gap at this point that, that you see there. Uh, in additional, we might ask the state for some gap fi- financing as well. Um. So that's, that's the life we live as we work towards, you know, dialing in those numbers.
Um, quick question with the wellby. Um, is that similar with the prior project where tenants only pay thirty percent of their income?
No, this is not a project paid, uh, 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 project.
Not section, uh, that's only section eight pro- projects that have that thirty percent. No, like, so in the last project, he said that, you know, tenants will only pay thirty percent of their income.
Yeah, that's with the Housing Choice voucher program with the, with the section eight housing or project based voucher program. So.
Wellby is not section, okay.
No.
So you guys don't have those.
We will, we typically will have voucher tenants with vouchers there and, and that would be the same process. But as far as how we. Operated.
Person versus the project.
Correct. The project itself, what was through the street, Lytech, uh, restricted rents based on A M Is through the Lytech. Pro- or the tax credit pro- um. Process, uh, and the tenants, we do typically have tenants that come with housing choice vouchers, which is what the second, you know.
Based vouchers are tied to the location. The uh flexible, house choice foot vouchers are tied to the person.
To the person.
Leave, they take their voucher with them. Whereas like a project based, it's, this is the room or.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we won't ever see hap contracts being issued by HUD for new projects that stopped many years ago. But they continue to reissue them for twenty year periods, like for Squire Village. But there's no new section eight coming around ever again.
Really?
Yeah.
It was a conversion of going to, from project focused to making sure that people had more ability to move. While retaining the benefits. So, change the approach.
And HUD actually pays the rent, the HUD portion of the rent under that hap contract and the tenant pays their portion of rent directly to the owner. So that's the, the difference. So the tenant pays their rent based on what they can afford. So that it's, each unit is capped under Lytech. So it's structured completely differently.
Awesome. Thanks, guys.
It's an industry.
Just because we spent some time talking about it and this serves residents between thirty to seventy percent of A M I, could you talk through? The income verification process and how that would work?
Yes, so um, with each unit will be designated a certain A M I level. And with that comes the rent. Limited to, uh, the way the calculations is about a third of their income. And, and so. And A, you know, higher the A M I level, the higher the rent for a one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. And so as we go through that, we. Uh, verify income and that's very critical, especially for the first year, uh, to make sure we're satisfying. That uh those, those tax requirements that, that we are serving. Individuals at the different income levels.
Any other questions for Andrew on the capital stack for the wellby?
I, uh, the way I look at it, let me know if I get this right. Uh, the bottom line is that we're going through these. There's another one coming up. A- and, uh, we asked for some options and came back and it's one of those situations where we're like. Of course you have options and here's what they are. You could either go with one of these uh fairly squishy ideas that we don't have baked yet. Because it's new and we always usually do this. So there's no fault there. You know, we're kind of like flexing a new muscle to say, let's. Talk about some of these other areas where we could invest, allocate our private activity bonds in. Or, but by doing that, nothing is solid. You could give it to like Chaffa, we could do it ourselves. But it, there's no guaranteed results. Whereas right now we have three projects, at least this next year, burden hand. And so I guess my question to the team is, do we even need to go through the capital stack of the third project? Because I.
That one's gone.
Yeah.
Oh, so that frees up.
Because Thor- Thornton and Westminster allocated their project activity for the P A Bs to make her already to help complete these projects.
No, that's great. So, so it does free up the, a little bit of what we might have. So we could still apply maybe this part to the others or as.
So if I can, there's, now there's, there's sort of the down payment assistance was the first part. And then now there's two projects as opposed to when we were here about a month ago, there was three projects. So we've taken one off the table because that project has been funded separately.
Amazing.
Can you remind me which one the Dawson is where it's located?
That was the unincorporated parcel.
You weren't here, Commissioner Henson, but Patrick buries all the phone with us today from Boston. Uh, they were able to secure P A B from Thornton for that project. So. They're, they're good, the project, the project we can be moving forward. So good news.
Usually you don't get like things where they're like, oh, don't worry, we don't need to ask you for this, but we found it somewhere else. Usually it's the opposite.
We were so excited for that update. So it, it's, it's exciting for us too. So, so for me, I'll just say, like, I, I don't wanna put the bird in the hand to projects that we have here at risk. But I do ask that we continue to flex uh some of the options of the asset stuff moving forward a little bit, like explore it a little deeper because. Of what uh our colleagues already acknowledged.
They're always good. I mean, we, we definitely have had years in the past where there's no project in the pipeline. And so it's good to have alternatives ready. I mean, that's where, uh, as we were referencing earlier. That happened two of the years in Westminster. There wasn't, there were no projects in the pipeline. And so we worked with Chaffa to assign P A B to them. And they issued. Right? So, yes, you're absolutely correct.
We have two projects here, you've got capital stacks to get to the bottom line. How cool would it be in, in, in the future that? We have a couple of updates of family A, family B and family C, and you're showing us a capital stack, you know? And showing us like, look, that uh, the asset savings, thousand dollars turned into ten, stack that with, you know, the Chaffa thing.
How to get them that unit?
And this family. And I would celebrate as much of that, you know, like for a three hundred thousand dollar houses, I would.
How about the land banking that we gave them permission to use to buy this? Like, cause we've stacked this a couple of times.
Yeah, I just think it's also cool to do the micro is all I'm saying. So.
Andrew, could we have that back from Maker? Like how you guys put together projects and like see how it. How investments compound on each other? Andrew, could we have some information like that back from Maker Housing Partners on how you guys do that analysis and, and show them? The micro like Steve was asking for?
Or uh, the homeownership, the homes that, or.
Neither. Yeah, any of these projects. Like what are the investments along the way? Who all contributed to make that housing unit possible?
Not necessarily in the moment, but after the, yes, yeah.
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 I think it's fair. Like the one that we just talked about, seventy two junction or whatever, junction seventy two. Like we gave a lot of, you know, towards that. And I think we need to be able to get credit, the county commissioners. And I'm not saying, like, I'm saying like of what they are investing in. Because there is usually enough cost somewhere along the way. I was talking about, I like the idea of also looking at the micro level. Capital stack for families, like individual, uh, cause I still think that asset thing is awesome. But I do, I, I support these two. That's at least. To burn the hand project right now.
I guess my question to the slide is for option two, if we were to sign full P A B allocation to Maker Housing Partners for Squire Village. And the wellby, that would be the full seven point six million. But I'm curious, like. Is it like a fifty fifty split? Or like, what do you, how do you guys do that?
Because it's so complex on the financing side and their sources and uses are constantly revolving. We would let them work out exactly what they need to make the application.
So Maker gets to decide.
Instead of the issuer on both.
Okay.
Yeah, and we were already in, in conversations with related properties and, and talking about that par- partnership on how we would issue the bonds as well as bring in. Uh, other, you know, other, um. Uh, like, sorry, uh, but at work in partnership. And so, yeah, we'd be committed to helping related and our project both get the adequate bond. A capital, a bond allocation needed to see both go through.
So if, so I guess just to kind of clarify, because you both, like in you, when you do the. Breakdown of all the dollars going to each project, each analysis has the full amount of seven point six million. So like, can these projects still move forward if they don't have the full seven point six million dollars? Both projects could both move.
So, yeah, so both projects, uh, would still need to find additional bond cap.
Okay.
And so collectively together, we would work together and see uh what makes sense. And so sometimes in the past. We have gone statewide balance and asked for a larger amount of bond allocation that would help other projects that were in partnership as well. Uh, you know. Sounds like Patrick's got some good conversations going with other municipalities. So they might get, you might get other awards from other cities.
Andrew, I, I just, just a point on that, that we have touched on. I think, right, there, there are bonds with Maker. That have been allocated in the past, right? That, that will need to be used or else they are lost, right? There's that three year threshold. So our thought process, to be clear, we, the, the full award here would allow us to move forward immediately. And put a shovel in the ground, start renovation on this project, Q one, twenty twenty six. What we are. Uh, looking for in partnership with Maker is to look at all the bonds that Maker has been assigned. And to make sure that we are uh allocating the bonds that are most close to their expiry. To the projects that are going to move forward most imminently. So i- in the case of the wellby, right? We referenced a, a, I think an application in August of next year, right? There's gonna be another P A B round on, on the wellby. There are other opportunities. We can go to Chaffa for a top off uh allocation that they will. Give us uh as of right, that is uh the lesser of four million dollars or twenty percent of the total P A B. So. We are on, on Squire and in partnership with Maker. I think we're, the objective here is to be really thoughtful about the bonds that Maker has. The expiration on those bonds and to allocate those bonds to the projects that are ready to move forward most imminently.
Okay. Cause there's a three year, so the twenty twenty five have to be spent by twenty nine.
Issued, yes.
Issued.
Special word, issued by twenty nine, okay. But we do have the assignment deadline coming up.
Assignment is what matters. Okay. Thank you.
So the options.
We're signing today.
We're signing today.
Part of the process when they know how much they need to issue of the bonds. Portions of however much that each project might need.
Okay, so these three projects came to us a couple of weeks ago. What were we deciding at that point? Twenty twenty four?
So, so our last presentation, um, included kind of three buckets. It was our twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four allocation. Those had already gone to Maker for other projects. And because uh one was a rehab and the, and the funding was a little bit different than they anticipated, there was some additional funds. So those additional funds were reallocated to the. Uh, and again, we, we, we added this additional language to make it as flexible as possible. Uh, I think we use the term of the max flexibility, uh, as you may recall. So those additional twenty three and twenty four allocations were assigned to the Uplands Affordable Housing. Um, so again, twenty twenty three had additional because the, I think the project cost came in less. Less than they were anticipated. And then twenty four actually had, was uh awarded, I believe it was to two projects, right? It was Uplands and another. Another project and that other. So that is something you're gonna just see with this, with these types of funding, because they are generally earlier in the process. So some projects, uh, you know, depending on them, either. You know, back in circumstances change, timelines change, there's a lot of uncertainty. So part of the approach is trying to create as much flexibility. Uh, and because of our great relationship with Maker, um, they've been very willing to accommodate, to accommodate that. So we're trying to really continue that. Um, path to maintain this flexibility because, um, you know, what if the Uplands project also gets additional funding from Westminster? Uh, as well, then maybe there's funds that we awarded to Uplands that actually could be applied to both the wellby, um, and the related project as well. So that's where we're trying to say like. Try to create buffers. Uh, I'm thinking of like a bowling reference. We're trying to create those, those bumpers and say, hey, within these bumpers, this is the area that. That you can operate.
But just to clarify, the board already gave the direction last time on the twenty third and twenty four, so you don't need to revisit that. Okay, that will be on consign calendar on September second. Sweet. Just a resolution with the change.
Okay, cool. Um, I'm actually okay with moving forward with number two in the slide that he's about to give to in a second. Um, and so I, I think that that's fine. I really do wanna have a conversation though about the twenty twenty six P A Bs and how we use them. And really focus in on the asset development program. I think that that could be something really exciting. Um, for Adams County and, and building that generational wealth. Um, and then I love Emma's um. Suggestion about getting an overview of that investment from Adams County from Maker and what does that look like? And one of the other things I was curious if I could get is, um, at the, at the end of the day, what was the cost per unit? That Maker created? And just so I could get a sense of like, we did all of this investment and this is how much it costs. For each of these one units or how many units that we created or I don't know what it is. Um, I think that that could just be really helpful when we look at investment. Versus the cost versus the number of units that we have. As we continue to look at, you know, potentially. Um, other P A B uses, um, and, and what does, how do, how do we kind of compare these? Investments over time and impact to community? That'd be great.
I also support everything Julie said, so I agree.
Oh, yeah.
I'm fine with number two.
I'm hearing.
The fa- and the follow up conversations that are important.
Follow up conversations, yes.
But part of our follow up is also, we wanna lean into the asset thing as well later on. Like we want to, like, this makes sense. There's timing issues. Burn the hand to great, great projects. Let's, let's make sure that we don't over allocate later in case there's an opportunity for us to actually help families build a cap, a few families to build a capital stack. And I think that's important because when we invest in some of these big projects. Can you go back to one of the projects, the capital stack on one of them? Okay, so like this one, how many units is this one?
Hundred seventeen.
Hundred seventeen and it's fifty five million dollars, right? So how many units is that per?
Uh, and the last column to the right is the, is the per unit cost. So fifty five million for the total projects of forty seven one thousand per unit.
Yeah, I think that's important to see.
Yeah.
Is that where, then go back one? Uh, oh, that one doesn't show.
That one does show it.
Well, let's just say like, we've gone from, since I've been here ten years ago, from like two hundred thousand dollars per unit, now almost five. And that's subsidized. Like, you literally could buy houses in Pro Mac and Sherwood right now for four hundred and. And that's a full, like a full on house. So, and I don't mind doing this. I'm just saying.
It needs a new roof and a wa- new water heater and their electrical's a little sketch.
I'm just saying like. I'm just a new bright. So I'm just saying like, I want us to be thinking about it from in terms of dollars that the big sexy projects aren't the only thing that we have. To help some of these families. And if we can do other capital stacks to help folks, even if it's just a couple at a time, you're changing. Give them ownership, literally they're investing almost the same amount.
It's very true. I will send this as a conversation, a richer conversation for a later date. It's always important though to recognize that there will be. A M I levels and individuals within them for whom homeownership isn't their best option. They may need surrounding. Wraparound services or other things. So we always have to think.
For seven to ten years to rebuild their credit to be eligible and they need a place to go. That's, that's more open minded about housing them without intro.
So it's part of our housing spectrum. Right. We'll have the housing needs assessment too to help understand where are those needs gaps. That'll be coming very soon.
Thank you.
How is the study going on that? Is that almost done?
No, it's not almost done.
They're doing outreach now, in the thick of outreach.
Soon. What does very soon mean to you?
In fall, the twenty twenty five, so.
Okay. Or fall like?
Few months.
October, November, probably depending on agendas. I mean, they are working on the data right now and doing engagement.
I recall at that time, you all had wanted us to come back with the mapping of how all of the housing studies interrelate. How it all works on our rainbow spectrum. So that we can talk more to our housing strategy overall.
And our legislators. Sounds like we have support to move forward with option two. We will have an agenda item set for September second. With the timing, we will need to have an assignment agreement between Maker and Adams County. Signed that date. So we're, we'll work together in that, um, with the resolutions submitted to Dola with the agreement by September fifteenth. So we don't lose our P A B cap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. I'm Nick. I work with Patrick. Sorry I jumped off, but great to meet you all and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Erica. So we're about an hour behind today. We had an extended meeting this morning. We had a land use case and so why don't we go around? I understand that there's some folks online. Go around and do introductions and then we'll go, we'll end with the panel to start your presentation. So Steve, if you want to start us off, we'll go around the horn and then we'll end with Kristen.
I'm Steve.
Julie Mulcahy.
Adams County Commissioner.
Lynn Bach Adams County Commissioner.
Kathy Henson Adams County Commissioner.
Emma Pinter Adams County Commissioner.
Heidi Miller County Attorney.
Dion Schroder County Manager.
Alicia Reese Deputy County Commissioner.
Katie McGoole Department of Human Services Director.
Kristen Zolvan Deputy County Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. First, I want to acknowledge the work of our contractors who care deeply for the community and the over two decades relationship that we have had with them. I'm here today to revisit the TANF Colorado Works funding trends, spending, contracts, and make recommendations for the program and the contract changes on, so that the program is administered within available allocation, the available allocation that we have. Last, I'm seeking the board's direction on our TANF discretionary contracts that are set to expire September 30th of 2025. Just a reminder, we have presented to you two previous times in March and in May. And on June 24th, TANF contracts were extended by three months to allow for us to continue to evaluate the program and the funding. And today, we will present several options to you for your consideration to align the county's resources with the goals of the TANF program. Sorry, I'm getting used to this thing, which I have to do almost every week. So you would think I would be better at advancing slides. The Federal Personality Responsibility and Work Opportunity Reconciliation Act of 1996 created the TANF program, which is a block granted program that provides financial support to low income families. To receive the federal block grant funds, states must also spend a certain amount of its own money, which is recall, which is called maintenance of effort or MOE, which is matching funds. The annual federal TANF block grant allocation is about $16.5 billion. But I do want to point out that due to inflation, the real value of that money has fallen by more than 50% by 2025. State allocations that were determined in 1996 based on historical spending have not changed to account for demographic changes or population growth. DDHS, Colorado Department of Human Services passes through 80% of the state's TANF appropriation to counties and block grants to fund the Colorado Works program. The annual amount is 130 that Colorado receives is $136.1 million. Each county is required to contribute local funds, again called maintenance of effort, equal to about 15% of each county's allocation. Adams County uses county general funds to fulfill this MOE requirement. And in state fiscal year 2024 to 2025, Adams County was obligated to contribute 2.8 million in matching funds as a part of our TANF total allocation of 19.1 million.
I would like to ask that one question. I just sort of think we're about this correctly. So this, so federally, you said it's about 16.8 billion? But in 2025, I mean, because of, so it's fallen by 50%. So are we, is, I'm trying to think of different ways to think, to approach this, think, wrap my brain around this. Are we talking about, really, it's only about that 16.5 billion has only about $8 billion of value? I'm not sure.
The other, the other way, the other way. So like when it was originally allocated, that is worth a little over $30 million in today's funds. They kept the dollar amount the same since it was issued in the 90s. And so the buying power of the dollar amount has gone down over time. Had they updated it for cost of living adjustment or like any one of those, like, why am I blanking out? You know, the different inflation adjustments that happen through almost all other funds, this would have grown to over $30 million as opposed to.
Thirty million, billion.
I'm so sorry, a billion. I'm so sorry, billions. I'm sorry.
No, you got it. Okay.
You're right. But like, it's like the value of it, like at the time, it would have been double, like because of inflation. Like $100 back then is $200 today.
And but the other impact I'm trying to also incorporate into this is the population growth. So it's not just the buying power, but it's the population growth, which is also.
Seen, seen large increases to our caseload over the period of the program. And so we'll talk a little bit about that.
Yes, just under 30 years. Thank you.
Just a quick overview, we, we talked about this in terms of our funds, 50%, and this is just a general overview. 50% of the human services budget is generally made up of federal funding. We receive about 30% of state funding and then we contribute 20% of county dollars in order to administer the programs. Yearly, the total human services budget is approximately $185 million. This is just a breakout of the, the different funding streams that we receive. So economic mobility, that would be your SNAP and Medicaid funding. Child, adult and family services, that's your child welfare block grant and your adult protection services. Administration dollars, a lot of that is made up of also SNAP and TANF funding as well as some of your Medicaid funding, our workforce and business center, and then Head Start. Today, we're going to really hone in on the 20 million, and this is our 2025, 2026 allocations. So the $20 million that we receive in TANF programming. Just also as a brief overview, we do receive $28 million every year in our budget as allocated for our mill levy. This helps us meet that 20% match requirement. It also funds learning, some learning and development activities for the department as well as community events. And then we have the Social Services Fund, which is really our, our reserve, which is sitting at about 15 million. Colorado Works spending falls into three categories, your administrative spending, basic cash assistance, and non-assistance or discretionary funding. Federal law allows states to maintain a reserve fund of unexpended TANF funds and the state statute allows counties to do the same. The current TANF reserve amount for Adams County is $666,000. Just a quick breakdown of what each one of those different funding streams are. Administration covers the cost of personnel, technology and office supplies. Basic cash assistance is statutorily required and is available to very low income families with children to help meet their basic needs. And discretionary, as the only discretionary spending to the, of the TANF grant, this category is where Adams County, as well as other Colorado counties, has flexibility to adjust spending in order to continue to operate the mandatory TANF activities. While the amount of TANF allocated to Adams County, your red line on this slide, actually has increased since 2022, our total TANF spending, the height of the stacked bars has increased at a faster rate. In 2024, we were able to cover the overspending from property tax revenue received from the county's mill levy. In 2025, the overspending will be backfilled again by the mill levy revenue and the county's social services fund. However, the social services fund is a source of funding for various ad hoc initiatives of the Adams County Board, UOL, and the department, such as funding the crisis assistance program or supplementing Dr. Crog programming for Meals on Wheels for aging adults, which was a decision made in 2023. The social services fund is also used to cover expenditures from other allocations and cannot sustain the current rate of TANF overspending. Thus, the TANF budget needs to be brought in a line, in alignment with the available funding levels that we have. TANF spending has outpaced allocated amounts due to community need and caseload increases. The TANF budget needs to be again brought into alignment with the available funds. This figure focuses on each of the three types of TANF expenditure, showing how each has increased. Since 2019, the most significant area of increased spending was non-assistance or discretionary, followed by basic cash assistance at 50% and administrative increases of about 41%. By 2020, the reserve balance had exceeded 6 million for each of the past four years, consistently pushing the maximum allowed rate up to 40% of the annual top TANF block grant. So there are some federal requirements around how many, how much of a reserve we can actually have on hand. So during COVID, alongside the board, we decided to push many of those reserves out into the community for the needs that the community was seeing, specifically around shelter and homelessness prevention services. Our BCA caseload, however, has increased by 20% from 2021 to 2024, while BCA spending increased by 54% over the same time, time period. This is based upon House Bill 221259. The bill implemented a one-time 10% increase to the basic cash assistance beginning in July of 2022. Benefit amounts were again increased by 6% in July of 2024, when the annual COLA, Cost of Living Adjustment, was first applied in accordance with the bill. And they will increase again by 5% in July of 2025. Counties are required to provide workforce-driven case management to all basic cash assistance recipients, which Adams provides through the Workforce and Business Center, a division of Human Services. Adams County continues to experience growth that, both in our caseload as well as in those BCA expenditures.
Can we?
Yeah.
Can you go back one slide? So I want to go back forward again, but I'm going to go with this for now. I have a question. So like, we've been, you're saying that TANF funding from the state has increased?
Slightly, year over year.
Yeah. Then there's an overspend. What does that mean?
So we had been utilizing our TANF reserves that we had to provide the discretionary services through contracts to meet the needs of the community, recognizing how, especially in that 2024 time period, how many of the families in Adams County were really experiencing hardship due to COVID. So we had increased some of our contracts utilizing the TANF reserves that we had on hand. Now, the TANF reserves that we had, which at one point were at 6 million, have been utilized over those, the two, three, two-year time period. So now our reserves on hand are only 666,000.
Okay. So let me just get this correct. So like, at one point, we had $6 million of reserves. And what's the reserve for?
Oftentimes, counties talk about needing it for a rainy day. So that was the decision of myself and the board at the time to release that funding into the community based upon the needs that we were seeing because of the impacts of, of COVID.
Was this different than the, than the conversation we had like a year and a half ago, where I said we need to have like a policy to set the reserve at a certain amount?
Yes, sir. So that reserve is the human services reserve that was on this slide here. So that was specific to the Social Services Fund balance because we know, and that policy came into play because we know that other county spending and how we close out the end of the year does impact what amount of money we would have to utilize within our reserve or the mill levy in order to support the programming.
I don't know what that meant. I'm so sorry. Let's go. So these are two different reserve funds. And the one that, the TANF reserve was set aside for rain day. And we've, we identified in the past, in the last couple of years, it's a rainy day. So we just started drawing from it. And now we've spent $5 million out of that reserve and not replenished it. So we've got $600,000 left there. And, and how, do we have a history of what that balance was over time?
Yes.
Is it on one of these screens?
Been a call in a friend. You're gonna have to come sit at the table.
Okay. So that reserve amount comes from over the years of not spending our TANF allocation.
Yes.
And so that, it's held at the state of Colorado. So we actually, we don't book it into our accounts. It's just the state of Colorado kept track of it. And as we overspend our TANF allocation, they pull from that before they ask us to contribute additional county funds. We also have our fund balance, which is in our general, our general ledger account. And what that is, that's a reserve of all of our revenues, all of our expenditures. If it's a positive revenue at the end of the year, that increases our fund balance. If it's more expenditures and revenues, our debt decreases our fund balance. And so the policy is specific to the fund balance. The TANF reserve is specific to TANF only. And there are statutory requirements that we can only, we can only keep 40% of our annual allocation in our reserve. And statewide, that amount has continued to decrease. This is not, this is an Adams County problem. House Bill 221259 actually put in thresholds within the reserve limits to then require state general fund to backfill once, as a, as a state, as a whole, all counties, all 64 counties fall below 15%. Right now, it'd only take one or two big counties to not be lower than, you know, 25% to pull the whole state up. And so we're Adams County, Denver, a lot of big counties are at zero because some counties are still in that 25% threshold. We're not getting that state general fund to backfill our reserve.
If I understand this correctly, so like we have two reserves, one is the human services reserve and then one is the TANF reserve. And do we have something showing what reserve started, let's say, 2019? And for each of those and say, oh, 2019, this is what we had in the human service reserve all the way through to see how we've spent it down. Same with the TANF reserve.
Yeah, we can, we can pull that. I don't have it offhand right now, but we'll definitely put that together.
Yeah. The, the reason I ask is because I want to know if we've made a, like either made a mistake or not, but trying to figure out how we've spent it all down because now if we're out of rainy day funds and a rainier day comes, then we've, then we need to learn from this lesson. And in the past, we've been very careful to try not to spend more than we bring in. And so I know that that's a concern and each year, the finance director kept saying, oh yeah, we're not spending more than we're bringing in, except for on one-time projects. And now I kind of look back and I'm like, wait a minute, that's not true because these are not one-time projects. These are ongoing expenditures that we might have been spending more on not just one-time projects, but on ongoing services.
Yeah. And that's, that was specific to our policy on the general fund reserve. The one-time policy draw that our finance director was discussing at that time was specific to the general fund reserve only. So that's what she was talking.
No, it was about the budget. She was very clear to say that we don't spend more than on the budget, except for when we go over on projects. Like we could listen to all of the recordings.
The general fund reserve, that's our policy is, is specific to that reserve. I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't conflating this reserve.
Yeah, the TANF reserve is very specific to TANF only. It can only be used for TANF eligible expenditures that we charge to our TANF allocation. And if we spend more in a year than our TANF allocation has contributed to us, we have a reserve to pull back from. And where I think history, right, is we had COVID happen. We also had House Bill 221259 and everybody needed additional support. So we put additional supports into the community through contracts, but also our costs for basic cash assistance, which is our biggest pot of money, is increasing because of 221259 exponentially. So we got 10% increase in 2024, sorry, 2023, a 6% increase in 2024, another 5% starting, just started July 2025, as well as additional policy changes for less restrictions on work requirements and incarcerated individuals can be eligible for benefits. Less, less penalty on, we're getting the word. If someone messes up on TANF, sanction, thank you. So before it was 25%. Now the sanction went down to 1% or $1 of your full payment. So if you're getting $100 of basic assistance, you had a sanction, there was 25% of that. So we took $25 away from you. Now we're only taking $1. And so all of those costs compounded in the time when we put more money into our contracts as well. And so I think that's where we're seeing, we had, yes, our allocation went up, but our expenditures went up exponentially with increased contracts and BCA from House Bill 22.
So, so, so I'm trying to understand. I appreciate your patience with me as I go through this because we've got, we got human services reserve, TANF reserve. Every year, I can guarantee you, I've asked about, are we spending more than we're bringing in on the budget? And the answer was no, except for one-time expenditures. We've got a history of, now, if behind the scenes, it was like, oh yeah, but you never asked about human services. That was never like, until, I've been here for 10 years. So I'm very open about this is that it's been very careful to sit, to make sure that if we're spending more than we're bringing in. Now I know I have to know about which funds to ask for specifically, and that makes me a little nervous now. Because we've been going in front of folks saying, we're only spending more when it's a one-time project. Okay. So that's budget. Now, if we're saying, oh, but you never asked about that fund, then now I need, then that's a different issue we have to bring, bring up later. Now we're at TANF reserve. We've gone from 6 million in reserves, which is basically our savings account, and we've gone down to $600,000. You're saying that, is that different than BCA or is that is impacted by the BCA stuff? Because BCA is one of the sub expenditures underneath in TANF.
Yes.
And the BCA over time has changed. Now, when they say they're going to lower some of the sanctions, restrictions, reductions and all of that, did that mean we were required to now overspend?
Yeah, they, none of this came with dollars.
I'm, what I'm asking is like, was there ever a point where we run out of dollars and we say we, we're out of that money for the fund? Or do they say it's just this like endless spending, as long as people ask, we have to still keep giving them cash?
Yeah. So that's actually a conversation that we're having with the state right now is similar to our chapter conversation. Can we put freezes and wait lists on TANF, BCA clients? Because as 221259 reads, we have to provide the service. Essentially, the state of Colorado made BCA an entitlement program for TANF. That's a state of Colorado law. That is not a federal requirement. That is how the state chose to use our TANF dollars.
So, so, so when, 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 when the state says, and if we add up, what are all the different TANF expenditures? BCA is just one of them.
BCA, yeah. BCA is the biggest any of administration costs and then discretionary, which would be your contracts and supportive services.
So we've got BCA and, and there it is discretionary. And when we were stuck or realized that the state's change of the criteria for BCA was causing us to spend more BCA, why were we allowed or why were we recommending to continue spending more in discretionary?
We chose to, to bring that to the board because of the need that we were seeing in the community. And so instead of utilizing general fund at that time, through the budget request, we were, we chose to use the TANF reserves because they were available in order to, to meet the need that we were seeing in terms of the economic downturn with the pandemic.
And, and so we could literally look at some of these increase of discretionary spending from, let's say, 2020. Let's just use that as our baseline. And so what we effectively did is I thought a lot of our contracts were being through ARPA, not through TANF, when we were spending all that and investing in all these nonprofits that were our partners. Now I realize that we also extended and created this expectation from all those partners from a different bucket. Because we were telling folks for a long time, once the ARPA money's gone, be ready to go back to pre-COVID times. And now I see that we were using a different bucket, TANF bucket, and we never set that expectation with these folks that, hey, first of all, we're overspending. We're spending more than, than, and we're dipping into our savings for TANF. Why, why are we now stuck with this surprise and having all these partners upset with us that we've now run out of TANF money? We don't have the savings account to dip into. Were we not setting expectations with them that at some point this spending spree was going to end?
I believe that we were having those conversations. I, I was, I think that we certainly could have probably been a little bit more specific about end dates of, of potential contracts and things of that nature. But there, we've had ongoing conversations about how the TANF funding happened, especially when House Bill 1259 came into play, recognizing that those were going to have significant shifts to BCA expenditures. And so certainly recognize the, the reflection here and, and can take ownership and accountability that I could have done that better. But I, we, we have been having ongoing conversations. Some clarity?
Please do.
Yeah. Cause I think this is really what's led us having the conversation today and why we started back in March, kind of bringing up that this was something that was looming. And that's because it's been kind of a perfect storm of this situation. We increased spending on what we felt were critical services during COVID and the recovery from COVID. At the same time, state passed legislation that every year is ratcheting up the portion of BCA that we're required to pay, which is shrinking what we call the discretionary spending. And that's where we had been providing those supportive services that we think, you know, are beneficial to continuing support for our community, but it's shrinking. So at one point, you'll see the next couple of slides. At one point, we had much more flexibility within discretionary funds to be able to fund those contracts. That has been shrinking every year. We're now going into the third year where that BCA mandated amount is higher. It's shrunk that pool of discretionary spending and at the same time as our reserve is shrinking, which is what we had been using to keep that level of service. So now we're at a decision point of, do we continue with these services utilizing our general fund, which we haven't done before? We've been able to manage this using our reserves previously, but we're at an inflection point now where we are facing the, the situation of running out of reserves, climbing BCA costs. And if the county is going to continue these services, we've got to use county resources to do it. And we started kind of laying this out a while ago, but this is definitely a math problem that we, we can't get around and it's going to continue. To next point, the conversation with the state about the impact to counties on changing that BCA mandated level is, is going to continue. As it ratchets up, it really decreases our ability to, to use our, our reserves or other funding or TANF specific funding for some of these services.
So, so as I looked at this, and I'm looking at this on the screen, like our, our admin costs have, have gone up a little bit. But you're saying that the BCA, because of House Bill 221259, those requirements to change the, and, and we have to offer BCA is what you're saying?
Yeah, and statutorily.
And so because they have created this situation at the state level that BCA is basically gobbling up all of our TANF dollars. And for a while there, we thought, well, let's just reach into our savings account, which is our TANF reserve. And, and, and we said, well, yes, we see this happening, but we want to keep our level of service. So we were trying to get our cake and eat it too, which is fine. But now the day has come where we're like, we can't do that any longer. It's not sustainable. So what we have to do is be able to explain to the community, yes, we continued spending even though we knew this day would come. But we were trying to help humans be fed and sheltered and those things. Unfortunately, the reality is we're still in the spot where all of our TANF dollars are starting to get gobbled up disproportionately by BCA as opposed to discretionary, which means that we have two choices. Either we cut back on our discretionary spending, which is.
From within TANF.
From, from TANF. Or we backfill it with some other stuff, which there's a whole organization in this place that's asking for that same dollars all the time, everywhere. But if you go back to the spending, can I go back to that line graph? We need to be able to find out. What I'd like to know is when you look at this over time, 19, 20, 21, I'd like to see what the discretionary spending was and who it went to all those years. So when I have a nonprofit who's really mad at us right now because they see this coming, we could look back and say, look, we have to go back to pre-COVID days. I'm sorry. Some of this is because we're not in COVID anymore. Some of this is we did the best we could to prolong giving you the allocation for two. We probably went one or two years over than we probably could have, should have, would have, whatever. But we are where we are today. And, and show them that, that like this isn't us cutting, it's just us having to go back to level setting. Or we have to start cutting other services and the money from general fund we go towards, which includes cops and roads and everything else. We're trying to do the best we can, but I guess my, my concern is like, we are where we are today. There is a lesson learned at some point for us to have that discussion about communication and spending. There is a lesson learned at some point for us to have that discussion about communication and spending. But I don't want us to repeat this, and what happens if we have a really rainy day? And now we're only, we, we're not rebuilding those reserves. And then I do know that there was one part where i- in some of the overspend, there's a shared state bucket, right? And we were tapping into the shared state bucket for a number of years. So collectively, as an aggregate, if the state, if all the counties or whatever, didn't spend their full amount, they would, they would fill up their reserve to the max that they were about, and the spillover would go to the state bucket. And for years, we've been pulling from the state bucket, so we've-
Our demonstrated need for our residents is so high.
In fact, the state has already been subsidizing Adams County because of our disproportionate need, uh, for a number of years. But now that overspend bucket at the state level is gone, our internal bucket of savings is gone. And now BCA continues to gobble up more and more of what we have for TANF, and so it's squeezing out discretionary. But those are a lot of parts to think about, the state bu- overflow bucket, our own reserves, our own spending choices, and then how we communicate that. And so I, I'm trying to understand, so when we go back and I talk to an almost home or, you know, growing home, and I say, well, let's look at how much you've increased in spending over time, cuz we've really invested in those organizations. I don't want it to be a negative conversation, which is like, we gotta kind of go back to level setting cuz of, in part because BCA is gobbling so much up. And we're just running out of that money, and we don't have the state overflow like we used to do. That's a lot of parts, it's really hard to follow. But I think I finally get it, but the problem is, I don't know if anyone listening or watching this can understand what the hell I was even saying there. But I, but I'm seeing that, did I get any of it wrong?
Okay, so, thank you for that, Commissioner. Um, on the graph right now, the BCA, this is what statutory required, and that's what's reflected here. So in twenty twenty-five, we're just over not quite eleven million dollars, just under eleven million dollars is what we're required to provide. Okay, can you, I understand, let me see if I'm on the right one, yes, it's discretionary. Very quickly, um, what was this spike from twenty-two to twenty-three in discretionary? And then we hit a decline, twenty-three to twenty-four, and then we have another spike, twenty-four to twenty-five. Were those all policy discussions by the board, approvals? Cuz I'm, I'm kind of with Commissioner Odoricio to some extent that, um, what it appears to me, and not to say the conditions didn't exist for a rainy day decision back in twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, even in twenty-five, um, you know, mayors from around the region, the mayor of Westminster is that food assistance has been consistent throughout since I joined the board in twenty twenty-one, which was still a rampant, um, COVID recovery. So, I also thought that we were, a lot of these contracts were ARPA. So did we continue to sustain service with the funding? Cuz that's what it feels like. But can you explain some of the spikes that we're seeing in discretionary and does that anticipate it to level out?
So, uh, as Nick and I were describing that, or those were the decisions we made to increase, uh, the amount of dollars that were in TANF contracts in order to meet the community need, uh, knowing that they were, uh, many of them were needing help with housing, food supports, things of that. So yes, we did, as a county, have the ARPA funding, but we also did ratchet up services being provided with TANF dollars, uh, during that time period. So that's, that's the increase you see there.
And then we decreased it in twenty-three to twenty-four.
We did, uh, with, so every year, uh, as we're looking at, um, the RFP, through the RFP process and working on, uh, creating the contracts that come before, uh, you all were having discussions with our contractors to understand, uh, the level of services that they're able to provide. Um, so while it was very consistent for, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, we were making, uh, changes through, through the contracts, uh, for, uh, leveling up or leveling down services.
And that's when, was that when ARPA started to decline? Or we expected a cliff in ARPA, so we were backfilling it with TANF or at least front-loading it, the cliff with TANF? And probably not, I'm gonna say it, I'll own it a hundred percent, I'm one of the people that voted. I didn't fully understand the consequences of some of those decisions, and I think that, that we need to do a better job of making sure that we truly understand consequences of some of those decisions that were made, and if there, some of those come to us kind of spoon-fed, it, it, we need to do a better job of making sure we understand the opportunity cost, or the fact that as we went into twen- like Lynn was talking about, like twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, we should have had somebody at some point pump the brakes and say, is this really the rainy day that we need to start tapping into our TANF reserves? And I don't feel like I remember that truly being laid out, but I can't blame anyone but our, ourselves because the buck stops with us, but I do think that this board needs to be careful to not let this happen anymore.
So I, I appreciate the ownership, Steve, and I was here as well when we made these votes. Um, and you, I, I don't disagree what you're saying, I just wanna start there, I agree. I would also say, I don't think that we could have ever predicted the compounding effects of what we are looking at with the tariff increases that have increased our capital costs for projects that we're working on elsewhere. We had no full understanding of other significant expenses that we are gonna be dealing with. We did not anticipate two rounds of property tax cuts, um, from the, our own, you know, frankly, our own governor, like in our own legislature. Um, and we knew that our general fund primarily comes from property tax revenue, the cooling market. I don't think I ever would have anticipated USDA coming in and recommending cuts to food programs or I can't even imagine like what the Farmville reauthorization is gonna look like, that's supposed to theoretically happen in September. Like, we are looking at compounding problems. We could have anticipated one or two of them, but I don't think that we could have anticipated this much. And that in, in conjunction with the current president's recommended budget, that I believe last time we looked up, has a forty-three percent cut to HUD recommended as well, which is gonna just have a cascade of housing problems on top of what we're facing. And so I hear you that we made decisions to spend TANF reserve to respond to what was a humanitarian crisis at that time. But I think we believed the system would level out and, um, the economy would get better, and that is just not what is happening. And, um, I think that you're right. And also I think that we were right at that time because the housing insecurity and food scarcity that we were facing eighteen months ago-ish, when we made these decisions, were quite significant. It's just getting even worse now.
I totally agree. I think that things are getting worse, it's compounded. I do think that we also were coming from, uh, a history of, of, of abundance in our, in our funding to begin with. And decisions like the ones that were made in twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three hadn't hit where we're now at a point of scarcity. And I think we're finally having to change our approach to budget, finance and decision-making. And while we may have been two years later than I think we could have, would have, should have, those are the worst words in the English language, our time is now, and we gotta fix it. And regardless, for the last two years, we were still providing services for shelter and food and all those things. So I'm not, I'm not regretting, I'm saying that there's a lesson learned here because, God help us, if the rainy day gets rainier and we don't start reeling this in, then the consequences are gonna become more drastic. And we just need to change the culture of how we do this for this point forward, looking forward. I, I'm just gonna recommend that this board try to, it's a new day, let's do it.
Sure.
But I do think we have to learn from the lessons of, of these things and not sweep it under the rug. And we could take ownership of both the positives and the negatives, it is what it is. But yes, at the end of the day, there might have been some families that were fed that wouldn't have been had we made this tougher decision two years ago.
And Emma, Kathy, then I'm gonna jump in here, and then maybe we can move to the next.
Thank you for talking this through with all of us, cuz we're all very, I'm very upset. I think we're all very upset to be looking at these choices. These are not good choi- we don't have good choices. And I think we felt when we were spending the TANF reserves before, we were seeing people, that, that eviction spike was already starting to build. What was the last presentation we had? We're at a twenty-year high in evictions for Adams County, and it's just, we have-
We've never turned the corner that we were hoping we'd be-
We've never turned the corner that we hope we turn. And, um, I for one believe at a certain point, about five years out from this pandemic, we'd start to see the economy leveling off and people finding their feet, and we're not seeing that. So, um, I just, I felt the need to say, I think we're gonna have, I know you've got half your presentation left, so.
Sorry.
I agree with that. It's one of the hardest economic downturns I think we've, I, I think we've ever had in our history.
Thanks. Yeah, I just wanna say, uh, that I really appreciate the, the conversation, the context, um, the history. And, and the, the clear-eyed assessment of, of, of what's happened. And it, the term perfect storm does not really begin to describe, that's over, that's used a lot. And this is beyond, this goes be- beyond that. And I think at the end of the day, what it feels like for me, and I think what we, where we all are is what was just said by my colleagues, is this is, the past is in the past, but this is not where anybody thought we would be in August of twenty twenty-five. I speak for myself when I say that. I did not. Uh, because of the pain and suffering, uh, during COVID and after, and we have seen year over year, um, yet still increasing participation in our community events, which means we are still in recovery, but we have no resources for recovery because they're gone. And so to sad, the thing that's, that, that we all lose sleep over at night is that we have to be, believe, I am a, I, my background is in the arts, I am neither, I am not scientific, I'm not a surgeon, but I feel that my job now calls upon me to be strategic and surgical in ways that are going to be, make me unhappy. And, and, uh, and that's unhappy, but have significant impacts on the community. So that's the lens I'm looking through, but I think you've, I, but I, but the conversation about the last several years and what's on this graph, I do find helpful as a new commissioner, and I think it's beneficial for the community to understand, uh, the context of where we are now and where we're heading. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Um, so I appreciate you, um, Commissioner Odoricio, that, yes, there are lessons learned. I think that we also made data-driven decisions at the time where the corner never came. I also agree with your statement that it wasn't, um, the banner wasn't being waved that these were TANF reserves. I agree with that cuz it, it's not, it was not as memorable as some of the other discussions that we've had. That being said, um, is the reserve currently stable? And have we blunted the spend on that?
So the current reserve is- Hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Uh, we generally would wanna hold, um, a higher level of reserve. And so, uh, we, uh, that's why we're at the decision point where we're at today.
Is there a statutory minimum that of TANF reserves we are required to hold?
There is no statutory required minimum, um, and House Bill, uh, twelve fifty-nine does, uh, have different levers. Again, when all counties hit, um, I, uh, the fifteen percent, uh, of reserves, then that would offer some general fund, if general fund is available. Um, I think that at that time, it may be different policy decisions, uh, could be on the table. And so Colorado would have to face that in terms of, you know, do we increase, uh, county reserves, uh, or county funding? Or do we like make some different policy decisions, uh, about the TANF program?
But when you say we, you're talking about the state level or us?
The state will, would have to make, the legislature would have to make those decisions. The TANF reserves are held at the state.
Yeah, cuz it, cuz the way I interpreted that.
How much more presentation do we have? Will some of this be covered in the rest of the presentation or, oh yes, okay.
Let's go ahead.
To continue on, okay.
Uh, we had a lot of dialogue about this slide, so I'm gonna skip the slide, uh, because we, we just spoke a lot about that. Uh, last time I was before you, uh, you asked, how do we compare to other counties? And are we spending, uh, in particular, are we spending more, uh, in county administration costs? And so, uh, we, uh, reached out to our, uh, State Department of Human Services. And this is, uh, we spent about, uh, twenty-six percent of our allocation on administrative costs. Uh, you'll see other counties spend less. This is based upon the type of TANF model that they have in their county. So our administrative costs, we spend, uh, dollars that, uh, fund positions within the workforce and business center to do the work component of, uh, the TANF programming, where maybe Arapahoe County, uh, would do that differently, might contract that out differently. So their, their funds, uh, for that would be underneath their contracted services rather than, uh, their administrative costs. Um, and that's just a coding, that's how they code it at the state. Any questions on how we compare?
Yeah, I do.
There was another slide, just to clarify, there's another slide about what counties are doing with their TANF discretionary dollars too. So Katie will cover that momentarily.
Uh, so as we also have just discussed, as, uh, the caseload growth alongside the basic cash assistance payments have increased, uh, substantially from twenty twenty-one, uh, to twenty twenty-four, leaving, leaving us less discretionary funding available, uh, for contracts. We discussed, uh, the, uh, increased discretionary spending at length, uh, so I'm gonna move forward from this slide, uh, to our next slide. We, um, just to talk about the TANF financial summary, uh, from twenty nineteen to present, um, just the different challenges that we've had, we've also, uh, talked a lot about this in our dialogue just a few moments ago. Uh, but again, the increases to BCA, basic cash assistance, plus our increases to the caseload. Um, we also know we don't have the ability to continue to spend at the levels that we're spending. Um, and, uh, we certainly want to make sure that we are, um, performing a sustainable TANF program underneath, uh, what is statutorily required of us. Uh, when putting together, um, our options, uh, for you all, uh, we wanted to, uh, really look in to see where could we potentially find some ways, uh, to mitigate uh, some of the challenges of not having TANF contracts, so we did a county-wide contract inventory. Uh, these contracts are, uh, funded with ARPA, which we know will expire December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. Some of them are funded with, uh, CSBG funds, and some of them are, uh, funded with county funds. And so you'll see very, uh, little resources available, uh, for clothing and other type of mater- uh, materials. Um, quite a few, uh, uh, resources for emergency housing assistance through other funding sources. Uh, case management, uh, is provided through CSBG. Um, and food insecurity, uh, as you all know, we've directed a lot of ARPA dollars, uh, and CSBG funding, uh, to support that. Uh, where, uh, we see our largest gap is really, uh, services for domestic violence, knowing that, uh, those are, uh, funded with ARPA funds but aren't, um, supported by any other funding source. So, um, we know that their current issues facing our, uh, nonprofit, uh, partners and really the convergence of multiple changes at the federal, state and local level. Uh, you all touched on this again with your dialogue back and forth, but again, post-COVID, uh, COVID recovery, rising costs and inflation, changes, changes, uh, to the federal grant, uh, environment, changes in philanthropy. Um, our Colorado budget, uh, knowing that the tax, uh, property, property tax relief, uh, is impacting our revenues. And then of course, uh, the anticipated changes that, uh, we are all planning for with HR one, uh, specifically to Medicaid SNAP and, uh, WEOL. Here's just a snapshot, uh, as a reminder of what, uh, the TANF contracts, or the Colorado Works, uh, contracts are, and that these, uh, have an end date of September thirtieth, so, uh, housing and homelessness prevention, uh, case management of, this is specific for, uh, grandparents who are caring for, uh, their grandchildren. Um, domestic violence services, uh, we did have a subsidized employment program, we no longer have that. And then we have an agreement with, uh, the Health Department for the nurse, nurse support program.
This is, this is-
This is current contracts.
Current contract, and this is TANF dollars.
Correct.
Not ARPA dollars.
Yes.
And, and just to go back to one of the previous slides, this represent, like, if I look at one of the pie graph slides, okay, what am I looking at, fourteen-ish? There we go. This counts as administrative, the orange, orange component?
Blue.
The blue, the non-assistance.
So the eight point four.
Or discretionary.
Or discretionary.
Uh, so on some of the other slides, it was labeled as discretionary, but here it's labeled as statement, uh, non-assistance.
I didn't catch that. I'm not tracking all this.
Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-five, we've increased, yeah, see the amount that we've increased spending for each of those three buckets.
Yes, okay.
So our contracts make up about half of the discretionary spending?
The non-assistance.
The non-assisted.
It's called discretionary on one of the other slides, I, the slide should match, but.
Terminology on the slides.
So our contracts make up fifty percent of the
No.
No.
Non-assistance.
Non-assistance. Yeah, because it's four point five million, and then we have eight point four million there.
I, I see what Julie sees. Is that, is she right?
Uh, yeah, did I make that up?
No, I don't know what you're asking.
Okay.
Yes.
Pie is eight point four million.
Yeah.
Our contracts, if you look at the total, is eight point five million. So it's only fifty percent of that non-assistance. Am I saying this correctly? No?
No, the orange is administrative. See what you're looking at.
Okay, this, our contracts, our contracts at four point five million dollars. That's from the blue.
Oh, uh, that's a good question. Like, what, yeah, what she's looking at is that uh slide fifty? Page fifty, where it shows that we spend four point five million on those specific
Contracts.
Nonprofits. Can you go back more?
Sorry, new page, are you on?
Keep going.
Keep going.
Go forward.
It, it's not fifty, it's twenty-two.
I know, I don't, I, it's fifty in the full packet.
Oh, I'm looking, I just downloaded the PowerPoint.
It's the Colorado Works contracts.
Yeah, Colorado Works, so it's like
Slides, right, so the total there, yeah. That's four point five million dollars.
Yeah.
Our blue slice of the pie is at eight point four million.
Eight point five. So. What is it? In, what's considered indiscretionary funding is contracts plus any supportive service payment uh that we would provide to somebody who is receiving case management services uh through our Workforce and Business Center. Um, again, to support them in finding their work. So that could be work training, it could be um education, it could be uh other supplies. And so, yes, our contracts of that orange uh is about half of that. And then the other half is made up of uh the sort of supportive service payment, but either the contractor or our staff who provide that case management uh would be issuing to individuals who are receiving basic cash assistance.
It's an individual benefit. It's not going through to a contract. It's going to an individual benefit.
Yeah.
Okay, so just to clarify, contracts are coming out of the non-assistance.
Correct.
So what else? And then you, so you said supportive service payments from the workforce. That makes up the other kind of fifty.
Correct. Yeah, and it was getting really nuanced, so I was just whispering to Kristen, we probably could have kept some of the supportive service payments that we described in previous presentations in. Uh, but we thought for just trying to be clear and concise on the contract issue that we wouldn't, but the other part of that pie is supportive services.
Where we hand out the money instead of nonprofits, subcontractors.
Yes.
The direct cash payment that goes on, so they get the cash payment on their EBT card, the BCA, but they also get the this uh either paid directly to a vendor or paid to uh the person. Uh, this could be car repair, would be when we would do a direct vendor payment.
Okay.
And when I've heard you describe some of the, these types of assistance in the past, it, it, the, the example that always sticks out to me is uh, family was assigned mandatory therapy for child. We find out child's not going. Come to find out, it's because the family only has one car and eight family members, or this, that, the other, or mom works over here. And so therefore, child is not going to the court mandated therapy as part of the whole dependency neglect investigation, and that's in part because they don't have transportation to and from. And you need like a way to get kiddo from parents' house to therapy and back so that they are, one, getting treatment, but two, in compliance with what our social workers have mandated from them.
Yeah, I will just add, I think that's a great example. I think examples help a lot in this discussion. Um, but it provides a way to provide really customized, individualized assistance to these families that are very much in need of the direct cash assistance, plus some supportive services in order to lift them out of poverty. And so I think it's important for us to maintain that availability to provide emergent, urgent issues and address those with additional payments to those families.
It's lifted out of poverty, but it's also to prevent um, uh, and I keep the turn, like a child abuse investigation from progressing. From CPS was called to we have court involvement and child removal, right? That, or a loss, it also prevents loss of benefits. So these individuals are required to do a work requirement in order to receive their basic cash assistance. If we don't have an ability to, uh, the car example is perfect uh to repair a car. So if somebody has the ability to get it to their work requirement, uh, they would lose benefits uh because they aren't, um, they aren't uh complying with the program.
These little hiccups that, you know, when you have no extra cash and you run into a flat tire, you run into a problem. You literally need a few hundred dollars or even thirty, forty dollars to solve a problem.
Um, so just wanted to also do a gap analysis. So again, we get, gave you a, a visual that showed all of the um contracts that are available through ARPA uh and CSBG and other county funds. This, though, reaches a little bit beyond Adams County in some instances. So when we're looking at housing and homelessness prevention, uh, one of the biggest levers that we can pull there uh for low-income families is the TANF BCA. And so that increase to the BCA, again, was a policy decision made uh at the state level, and that does certainly help uh prevent uh homelessness. Uh, we know that we have our housing authorities within our community that uh we partner with. Uh, Colorado Housing Connects is a great uh resource for residents, as well as DOLA's Rental Assistance Program. Um, for case management, uh, again, that's the, the um support that we were providing uh that one of our contractors was providing to uh grandparents who are caring for their grandchildren, because there is child welfare involvement. There was a bill that was passed last session that increases the kinship payments uh for uh for our kinship uh providers. And so uh that is going to transition to our uh children and family placement team within the department. Uh, so again, those families will still receive support um while they're caring for uh their grandchildren. Uh, domestic violence is where we've identified probably our largest gap uh in terms of services available to community members. The employment support uh that was offered through our contracts is something that will be absorbed within the Workforce and Business Center programming. Um, and we uh know that we have the ability to, to use those uh WELO dollars flexibly in order to, to meet those needs. Um, and then the nursing support program uh that we partner with, the Health Department, uh, may uh have to reduce some, but many, much of that will be absorbed through our child welfare funding. Uh, so that uh important uh service will continue to be uh provided by the Health Department uh just using a, a different allowable funding source within uh the Human Services Budget.
So. I, I appreciate this. I think what this shows is that, that as we, if we have to, and if, if cutting back on these TANF contracts, the external vendors, subcontractors, partners, here's how we're gonna backfill this best we can. It may not be a one, one-for-one replacement, but at least it's a mitigation, and we're consolidating the functions in ex, other existing. Yeah. Well, could have, should have, but, you know, let's do this everywhere before we have to get into these situations where we identify common functions that could be consolidated for efficiency. We, again, would have, could have, should have, it would have been nice to do this a while ago, but we were in a different world, I guess. I but what I'm seeing here is that when, when somebody says, what are you gonna do? You guys are gonna throw people out on the streets and all that. This slide shows, no, here's where before these are the five different types of functions that existed, and instead of going through the four point five million dollars of external contractors, we're now gonna bring it in, these functions in-house uh and align them with some of the existing in-house uh structure. Is that correct?
Yes, we're trying to mitigate impact as much as possible.
Okay, except for domestic violence services.
Right, I was just gonna address that. Um, the gap analysis obviously points to the domestic violence services lines because we know that we did push out a lot of funding through ARPA, and we anticipate that we need to think about continuity of some of those functions. And so as we get into our recommendations, you'll see our recommendations are shaped by what you see on this screen. And so there are some options available to you that we can discuss regarding continuation of some of those, one of those contracts.
I wanted to display for you uh a really neat tool that is available. Uh, we partnered with uh Gary and uh have launched my friend Ben. And so this is a snapshot of uh what it would look like if a single mother went in to say, I need help with uh these services. It really does give a lot of uh points them in the direction of where they can go to receive the services they need. Uh, and so we're gonna continue to work with the, the Communications Department to make sure that this uh gets to our residents and they know of a way to help navigate. Uh, because as we know, um, human services is not an easy, uh, not always easy to navigate. Um, and as a reminder, we do have the Adams County Resource Guide. Um, I brought some over uh just in case you all would like some uh to have some on hand. And so Lindsay has those for you, uh, if you are interested in uh browsing through that.
Can I add one thing? You know, we're talking about the gap analysis. I think it's fair to say that, you know, we, we know that our nonprofit providers provide a lot of benefit um and utilizing their services. They have a lot of expertise, they have networks to pay, have established, they have infrastructure that we know ideally, um, it provides a lot of value. And so our effort here isn't really to um say that we can perfectly match what they provide. It really is mitigation and focused on if we're able to help fill the gap or connect someone to services so that we can still offer some support, what would that look like and where can we do that? But it's not to discount that the providers provide a tremendous amount of value through their structure, and that's something we know is just not a ideal um situation to, to let that go. But this is really in the effort of trying to do what we can with our resources and maybe think about going forward, how we can be more innovative and do more to look at where we're, maybe redundant or duplicating services or can align more as we go forward to keep the level of service as high as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, last time, you, you also asked, uh, what does contracts uh look like in other counties? Uh, Arapahoe is reducing, reducing uh their contracts and other non-discretionary funding as uh well as us. Uh, Boulder only has one contract uh with its Workforce Center at this time, uh, which they will reduce by eighty percent this coming year due to their funding struggles. Denver funds a contract uh through twenty-five, twenty-six, and then uh they have reported out that they will cut their discretionary spending and only be able to fund BCA going forward. Laramie County has uh discontinued all direct client supportive service payments, um, and they only fund program administration and BCA at this time. Pueblo eliminated four contracts over the past three years and is shifting to internal service delivery as much as possible. And Weld County historically had four contracts funded uh by TANF, and when Houssville twelve fifty-nine passed, contracts were reduced and have now been uh discontinued.
So if, if I might, I think what this shows is that we're not alone in what's happening. And in fact, if anything, we're behind making the decision. We've, we've prolonged and delayed the decision that others started making two or three years. Again, in that time, hopefully, we've helped people. It was best to count that money that was spent. It's not a waste. It was spent on humans. So I want us to put that out there, even if we have questions about the fiscal side of things. It, like, this is where we are now. But it's like everyone on this list has either reduced or eliminated discretionary funding for their external contractors on this list. I think that's important for us to notice in that we're just catching up with a decision that we've kind of prolonged, cuz we didn't wanna believe that this is where we'd be.
What is the timeline for these reductions? Are we talking about ne- next year's budget or what are, what?
Each one of them um are on a little bit different timeline. So in Arapahoe, they're doing a, a very similar exercise right now. They believe it will align with their next budget year. Um, and, but they contract on their county uh budget year, where our contracts uh run at different times throughout the year. Um, Boulder, that's uh for this coming year. Uh, that's when they're making their decision. Denver, um, again, uh, they're really looking at next uh calendar year as having to reduce uh all of their uh contracts. Um, and then Laramie uh has already uh discontinued all of theirs. So that's already done.
Okay.
Uh, Pueblo uh did theirs three years ago. They've always been in a different financial situation uh with e, just how their uh formula works in their county. Um, and then Weld uh made the uh decision in alignment with uh Houssville twenty-two, twelve fifty-nine. So that would have been a decision two years ago.
So how does this align with the comments that we are the outlier? That, that everybody else is, but, you know, uh, that, that we have, the, the comments that we heard this morning that we were called the outlier for not funding things. Everybody, repeatedly, where other, where they said, other counties are still fully funding, you are not, you are the outlier. So I, I, and I, uh, having heard that from people who have, who have been, they have hands-on experience with, you know, it's supporting people in our community in crisis situations. I was just curious, if, am I right? Does everybody hear the same thing?
Okay, no, I, yeah.
So I, so I'm not sure, so we, and you can't, I don't know, I can't ask you to defend the sta- sta- statement made by others. It just seems to me that there's a serious incongruity here um with certain comments that we heard this morning. And that I, that, and I, and I, uh, that I don't, I can't explain those comments either because we didn't have a conversation with those folks during the public hearing.
Well, I think it's important, you know, we, we've talked about that this is something that every county has been grappling with the best way to proceed. There may be some counties that have given more offering up to uh what they're doing with their programs. There may be some that have already um cut programs. I don't think that any county is gonna be an outlier. Everybody's kind of in the same boat when it comes to implementing twelve fifty-nine. I do think that when we uh, we extended our contracts by three months a couple of times, and that's been alarming and challenging for our providers to, to, to manage.
Yeah, me, and I do, and I appreciate that. Thank you. And I, that's kind of where I thought it was coming from as well. So, uh, but, but their uh outlier was a in- interesting choice, and I, I wasn't sure where that was coming from. Thank you.
Emma?
Um, so I'm kind of, I'm kind of curious looking at this. I don't see Jefferson County listed, and I'm just kind of curious if there is a reason they're not on it. I, and I see, I, I have the, you guys have it up here, I have it on my device, and I'm kind of going back and forth in the PowerPoint presentation. I see you've got some options for us next, but before we get to that, do you know where Jeffco is?
Well, I'm calling another friend who did this research for me.
So we, we outreach to all of the, the big, uh, large, uh, eleven large counties, and Jefferson County is one of that we didn't get response from.
Okay.
Um, so we're continuing to advocate to learn what they're doing, but um, as we all know, there's a lot, a lot going on in our field right now. So um, that, that's something we'll continue to dig into and, and really get, you know, where Jeff, Jefferson County's at. Like Katie explained, though, every county is, is kind of operating a little bit differently on how, what they contracted out, what they didn't. Um, so we just wanted to kind of show where we are compared to the counties that we did hear back from.
Okay. And do you have any more detail on the Arapahoe? It just says reducing contracts and other discretionary funding. Do they provide any more detail, or is that just what was available as a comment from Arapahoe County? Just to Kathy's original point.
Yeah, that was, that was what is available to, uh, as far as the comment, we, we, at our last uh study session, we followed up and said, you know, our board has asked these questions. What are, what are you guys doing? Where we, what, what direction are you going uh within? And again, every, every county approaches their discretionary and contracted services a little bit differently, but that's what we received back.
Okay, thank you.
Julie? And then, so just to be clear, as, as I'm reading this, after twenty twenty-six fiscal year essentially, no one is going to be supporting their contracts via general fund. They're either fading them out or
Bringing in service.
Reducing them, okay.
That's what I'm hearing from my, my colleagues, yes.
Is what, that they're doing what? They're gonna?
They're not um backfilling from general fund.
And that's, you said that's what you are here. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was clear.
That's important.
Yes.
Because I can separate the two specific decisions. Is are we just cutting discretionary out of TANF is separate from, are we backfilling what used to be covered by TANF with general funds? We're being told through you that nobody's backfilling with general funds because we're all in the same boat where general funds are being, yeah, okay. I also think it's important to note here that it's the compounding issue with HR one.
Yeah.
So we need to be more clear and accurate that this particular issue is not based on HR one. This particular issue is from the legislature and the governor who decided to put their thumb on the scale for BCA as opposed to discretionary.
And then cut property tax revenue twice.
Uh, that's, agree. It's all compounding. So I'm not trying to, like, and so what I'm seeing here Uh, that's, agree. It's all compounding. So I'm not trying to, uh, and so what I'm seeing here is that. Which makes me even sadder for our uh nonprofit friends. Because they're getting it. From all ages, right? Like, that's what's bothering me here about. But it is important to know that. This needs to be an example of what happens at the legislature when you make mandates without understanding the potential consequences of that. Now, shame on us, good on us for trying to stay as long as we could for the last two years. But we have, I would be willing to bet, we need to start making a, a very difficult but responsible decision to start building that, those funds. Describe the.
Reserve fund after TANF.
Back up. And that means that we need to figure out how to start saving up that too, not just cut what we've done. We need to stop the withdrawal and the bleeding from that reserve fund. And we need to start replenishing it. And so these are some very difficult, three different decisions. Stop the spend, stop the withdrawal and now start replenishing. Because God forbid, we have another rainy year day and what we feel like we've gone through, we're going to be in a world of hurt. So, but I do want to note, like, I'm not seeing the federal government on this issue. I'm seeing the federal, yes, compound.
On all the other.
Yes. Thank you, Governor and legislature for cutting our ta- our tax revenues. Yes, that's coming. But this is also, I am literally seeing BCA is gobbling it up because of the mandate of twelve, twenty-two, twelve fifty-nine. This is, needs to go on our list of consequences when the legislature makes a decision and they don't think through it. And we also need to find out, is this something that the legislature, as you said just earlier, could make a difference? And maybe reverse some of these decisions. But that's a different, that, that might be a legislative discussion. But I just want to highlight the fact that we got to be careful because it's not accurate if we keep pointing to HR one on this issue.
I hear you, but I, it is a compounding effect. If, if the social services team, if their human services team was not so under fire. But what's coming down the pike, both in the cut to administrative funding from the federal government, from HR one. And the cut, the increase in workload on the individual, so, you know, human services worker. The Medicaid cuts, the, the, what is going to happen? The, 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 the stress on the system at, and increase, almost doubled workload. At a time when administrative funding, because of HR one, is being cut. So the workload doubled for the individual social worker. And the funding to pay for that worker went down. And that's what they're having to implement starting in twenty-twenty-six. And so it's like even within the human services budget allocation, it's not like we cannot spend TANF on these dollars. Because we could make it up somewhere else in human services. Like, that's not true. Like, I, I, I hear you.
Is what you're saying. I agree.
It, it isn't literal, this isn't literally as a result of, but all of these things are compounding impacts.
I agree. But just to clarify, yeah, I mean, like, so even if HR one didn't pass in July. We would still be having the same conversation because the dollars were dwindling.
We'd have more flexibility and we'd have mo- less residents in severe need. We're going to have more residents in severe need when Medicaid and SNAP get cut that would go to these contracted.
Yeah.
You nonprofits and community for that, holy crap, everything has fallen on itself. I need emergency housing assistance. We're going to have more of those residents.
Agreed. Yes, we're going to have an increased need. Yeah.
At a time when we have less TANF money available to support them.
Was dwindling anyway. I mean, numbers are numbers. It was always going to go down to where we are, based off of how we were spending.
But that, we weren't spending, to what Steve said, we weren't spending into the wind. We were spending in response. To year-over-year need going up and like, we all just kept thinking, well, we'll ha- it'll have to level off at some point. But the need has never leveled off. It's just.
Agreed.
So I, I appreciate this discussion and you're right, you're right, Steve, and you're right, Julie. That, you know, even if HR one did not exist, did not pass in July. I guess as far as impact is concerned, is that this board has always stuck the landing. We've always taken really complex, challenging issues in community, in our departments, you know. In our nonprofits and we've always stuck the landing. We've always figured it out. And I think that we are still there. I still have hope that we are still there. Um, our options are limited. They're more restricted now. And now we're not just sticking one landing. Now we have to stick five landings. Because of the waterfall effect of HR one, not only on. Our citizens, but what will end up being also um clients that go to our nonprofit partners. So it was said in co- uh, you know, I said it in context this morning. My intent was, is that this is the picture now. It's not, I understand that those advocating this morning were looking very specifically at three items of. Housing mortgage, rental assistance. They were looking at it being very expeditious. They're also looking for dialogue. And then there was stuff sprinkled in there by other speakers. But now we're looking at sticking the landing, juggling all of the balls in the air. Um, for the sake of our residents. And I believe that we've had, we've known about this for a while. We've had this conversation. I know Deanne, you said, since I've been here, ma'am, it has not even been a year. It's been about ten months. Um, I appreciate that, but we saw this coming. And we've had made small incremental changes. I, we made the decision, while it's alarming for our nonprofit community. To sustain three months at a time. I, I would also be alarmed if my funding source. Went away and I had three months to figure it out. Um, so I guess this is the canary in the mine moment where they're going to also have to blunt. Some of their intake, which is, we, we know we can spend our entire general fund budget. Just on this to help community. And we're so restricted now that we have to figure out in these funding sources. In, I don't know what the state ledge is. I'm interested to hear from those that went to CCI or CCAT, CCAT. What was said by the state legislatures on how do they intend to fix this? Does it?
I tried, I tried. I, I did, I. I, I tried. I got nominated as like offered up his tribute to like, give the hard press to Speaker McCluskey. And Senator Bridges and I, I didn't get anything from them other than we are not planning for the future. We are cutting resources today and we are cutting to make up one point two billion. And there were several.
They're not going to have extra to give us to the back.
But there were several proposals offered because if one of the bigger problem, now we're getting off topic. But like if one of the bigger problems, and it is highlighted in some of your other slides, is that because of the heightened qualification requirements. More people are going to lose their federal benefits, their Medicaid or their SNAP. So therefore we should fix getting as many people accurately qualified as possible. So that we're drawing down as much as possible and stabilizing our community as much as possible. And Speaker McCluskey basically said, no, we don't do that. We're just going to cut. It was awful. It was an awful conversation.
Anything else for?
So we do have some options to talk about.
Hey, thank you.
And we might want to proceed.
So this is a summary of the options that I am going to go through, um, because we're uh, uh, running short on time. I'm just going to say option one would be to contract uh for domestic violence services through six thirty, twenty twenty-six. Um, and discontinue all our other existing contracts on nine thirty of twenty-five. Option two is to contract for domestic violence um through uh six thirty, twenty-six. Extend all other contracts through December, uh, giving uh our nonprofits a little bit more of a runway. And then focus our TANF programming, obviously on BCA as we're directed to by statute. Option three would be to extend all contracts uh to six thirty uh and also still do BCA. And then option four would be to continue some contracts with the use of general fund to backfill. Um, but we did note from our uh budget team here that use of general fund balance will limit. Uh, our ability to respond to other financial resiliency as changes continue at the state and federal level. Um, I'm going to go into detail so you can see what the numbers look like, uh, because I think that might be helpful. Uh, so if we're looking at uh option number one here, uh, again, our total town, TANF allocation is about twenty million dollars. Our administrative costs are about six point three million. We anticipate BCA will uh be about twelve point one million. A domestic violence contract uh would be three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-three dollars. Which leaves one point one million dollars of that discretionary funding uh left for the emergent. Uh, type situations that we uh spoke about earlier, uh, to either be able to provide if somebody is in that. Uh, again, uh, very emergent need or uh if it's unspent, that would be what would uh replenish uh the, the reserves.
Question on this. Why, why six thirty?
Our contracts are in the state fiscal year and so. Be restoring essentially the twelve-month contract that would have originally expired in six thirty, twenty twenty-five. But we did a three-month extension so that we can look at these options and bring back to you some additional recommendations. So it'd be getting that back to that whole month renewal essentially that would have gone from June to June of twenty-five to twenty-six.
Just, just for clarification, this would still be paid for. The family tree contract would still be paid for our discretionary.
Correct. That's correct.
Thank you. That, that explains. Because if it was going to be something, no, never mind. Yeah, but thank you. Good explanation.
Option number two, uh, again, would be for us to uh continue with family tree for domestic violence. Through six thirty of twenty-six. Uh, extend all other contracts through the end of the year. Uh, and so what this does uh would be, of course, the DB contract at three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And the other contracts at five hundred and seven thousand dollars, leaving only six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of discretionary funds for those emergent needs. Our option number three here, uh, to extend current contracts by one year, uh, totaling uh two hundred and twenty. Or two million, two hundred and one thousand dollars, uh, discontinuing seven of our eight uh TANF contracts of six thirty. And maintain our contract with Family Tree. Um, in this uh scenario, uh, the DB contract is approximately three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And our other contract cost for that time period would be one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. Uh, and the fund balance uh support that we would need uh would be three hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and two hundred, three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-seven dollars. And option four would be to continue discretionary spending and maintain supportive services uh contracts. Uh, in this scenario, um, we're looking at um approximately uh eight million dollars. Uh, and uh fund balance uh support needed of seven point three million dollars. Uh, and again, no other remaining dollars for discretionary funds. This puts all of your options uh into a snapshot, uh, so you can see uh the different scenarios and cost of, of that spending. Uh, before we go to our recommendation, um, I just thought, uh, from a good question of what does, we, we expect BCA to increase again? Uh, so uh, we do not expect to see an increase to our allocation. So I, we anticipate that our allocation would stay the same. That's in the orange box. In the gray box, we had projected fourteen percent increase uh to BCA. That includes the required uh. Increase per twelve fifty-nine as well as productive caseload growth uh due to additional need in the community. Um, we anticipate that our administration costs will remain about level, uh, which means that uh we would be in a negative. Uh, for state fiscal year twenty-six through twenty-seven. Uh, so again, just showing as these BCA increases continue. Uh, it has that strain on uh the available dollars uh through, that are, are available discretionary uh funding. Our.
Quick, quick question on that. So BCA is going to continue to increase over time. Kit, I mean, will it eventually just breach? The full allocation? Okay, that's the.
It's going to exceed it.
What happens if it exceeds it? What, is that like a really a thing that we'll have to face one day?
Yes, and I think that that's when the legislature is going to have to make some decisions about, uh, does BCA remain at the level it is? Uh, BCA is required. And so, um, you know, are we looking at uh changing any of the eligibility factors? Or are they looking at uh providing some state funding uh to be, be able to provide this? But yeah, there's going to have to be some different decisions.
How many years until BCA exceeds the funding that we have?
I think only, only a couple.
Yeah, I would say this slide right here tells you, I mean, in order for us to initiate BCA, we have to have staff to approve staff. And so this one right here, next year, we're saying with our staff costs and our BCA. Hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. And so next year is our.
Next year, okay.
Our BCA and our admin costs exceed what we will receive on the allocation.
BCA is gobbling up discretionary bucket. But does BCA eventually gobble up the admin bucket?
It may.
Well, that, I mean, i- if it's required.
Yes.
So I guess my concern is like, and I appreciate you being the director. You don't want us to touch that yellow bucket. But we've had a lot of conversations about cutting back on all these other buckets. What can you do to reduce the TANF administration bucket?
We are, uh, just as a reminder, we're currently underneath a soft hire increase. Uh, so when we're talking about what's in the administration bu- bucket that is staffing, it is also going to be technology. It's going to be, uh, you know, the, the cost for, for uh our, our building, things of that nature. And so I, we will definitely be looking at how do we make adjustments within our admin funding. To make sure that we are as lean as we possibly can be and still able to administer the program as we are required by all of the rules.
So, so what I'm getting at though is like, I understand that administratively, we always want our piece to be the last to be reduced. But according to this, next year, you have to find a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars out of that yellow bucket. Because you're not allowed to pull it out of the BCA bucket.
Correct.
So what are we doing to prepare for that?
Uh, right now, we are not hiring uh, what would be additional positions that we would have hired for. We have not hired those.
But that doesn't cover the deficit, does it?
Um, it probably will. I haven't done, fo- fully done that math problem yet. And so I would say like any reduction in staff uh is going to. Staffing lines that would have hit that uh will hopefully even that out.
Here's where I'm getting at, like, we have a lot of nonprofit partners that have been with us the whole time. They're seeing that they're on the chop block in the short term and that we have not done any self-chopping in the short term. Then we see in a medium term, next year, that even we're on, even our bucket is on the chop block. And I'm saying, let's not continue this, this procrastination of difficult decisions. When there might be some decisions we make now that make it less painful later, but not without pain. I get it. And so I just, I think it's important to note that, that our partners in the nonprofit community are going to say, why don't you also take. Take a haircut a little bit too, like the rest of us are. And I can understand how they would come to that. But let's also keep in mind that if you remember the mapping, how we're doing the backfills, going into that yellow bucket are going to be. A lot of the people that are going to be providing now more services. So we just have to have our messaging and our explanations put together. One side is, we need to start possibly looking at cutting the yellow. On the other hand, because we've cut so much of the blue. And we're mapping things back to the other. Now we're already overloading the yellow bucket here, meaning the admin. So I just. And this is another example where it's a different, very difficult decision that we have to make very soon. Which is stop the spend and the bleeding, stop the depletion of our reserves, figure out how to start replenishing reserves. And where are we going to be able to make cuts in our own administrative costs? Just the need, the, the statutory requirements of House Bill twenty-two, twelve fifty-nine. And I don't want us to say, we're not going to touch that for a year from now and then regret that we procrastinated again on this specific decision.
Right. And I will say in this admin bucket, this is the same amount that we use for this. That's the same amount we spent this last year. So we're talking a flatline for this next year and the following year. A flatlined administration is a cut.
I totally agree. Especially when we're adding more stuff and.
And so that's part of it is, and we, it's hard to predict what the true cut will look like. And so to maintain, showing you that there was, is a cut, we flatlined it for two years in a row. And so that, pretty based off of inflation, that's a reduction in our administrative.
Is there any chance? Central could lower that orange bucket?
Chance. I mean, we've been discussing that. Um, I think that that. Chance, I mean, we've been discussing that, I think that that may be something that rises further up to the priority list. But I think certainly
For special session?
I don't know if it's gonna be in this special session, I would anticipate not until next year's legislative session, because there's just too much to accomplish in such a short period of time in the August special session. Have heard otherwise, please let us know.
Oh, believe me, like, the I mean, allocation committee and the human services, like, there's a lot of conversations about what is available, when, and like, what do they reimburse for and what do they cut?
Question, how many people are supported by BCA? How many Adams County residents do we support?
We have that in a previous one.
And you could come back to that if needed, but I was just kind of curious, I mean, like
It's a great question. We have it somewhere in here. Okay, so our recommendation to you all is that we move forward with option two based upon knowing that there's still a need for domestic violence services, and knowing that we still have some time before we realize, fully realize the Family Justice Center going into place and things of that nature. And so we believe that this is going to help our nonprofit think through other options and ways of turning down their programs and giving them a runway for that, and being able to have that dialogue that they expressed that they wanted to have, as well as, again, continue important domestic violence services that we wouldn't have otherwise.
How other county doing domestic violence supportive services?
I don't know that, I can definitely reach out to to them to see how they, how they are providing that, those services within their county. I know each county takes a little bit different approach.
I, I think you bring up a really good question, and I'm gonna have to call on Steve or Emma to help me with the statistics, because they just don't come as quickly. What it does, because there are people, folks watching, there might be nonprofits watching or citizens, is that probably twenty twenty two, twenty three timeframe, is that a large number of our homelessness is people fleeing domestic violence and partner
I'm gonna, I'm gonna
Remember the percentage.
There were, there were two numbers, it was fam- it was violence in the family and then officially domestic violence. So there were like two tags, and together they
So this is, for those that are watching, I do appreciate the call out on domestic violence supportive services to continue because of the statistics that you will give, Matt, and it, and we also named, it's also here on this slide, it was named out loud, the Family Tree of providing that. So I think it's important to have, give those the background of why domestic violence services, but if you have the statistics, thanks, Matt.
Yeah, commissioners, you're, you're actually all correct. And what we saw particularly following the pandemic is that the number one contributor to people entering homelessness was a domestic violent situation. And that held for three, four years, until we started onboard some of the domestic violence support services. We have more victim services, we have more transportation, we have a, a lot of opportunity that is now present, which has allowed domestic violence to move down the ranking now. And now the primary driver is mainly economic considerations.
I really appreciate that, and, and thank you for naming the new number one. Is that those that were fleeing domestic violence are also very motivated to find permanent housing for their families as well, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that statistic and the success of that program. But just wanted to name that.
On slide ten, and the presentation I has emailed to you all, if you want to use that in your discussions with others.
And commissioners, we do have the answer to the previous question about how many clients are supported by basic cash assistance, I'll let Katie cover that.
So that's four thousand six hundred and eighty one individuals, so about sixteen hundred cases. You have to have very low income to be eligible for the program. And just for context, one parent, two children receives five hundred and fifty nine dollars per month.
And that doesn't include any supportive services, right? They don't have like, you know, somebody who's reaching out to them and checking in, and like, some, like, some of the things that are nonprofits are currently doing, right?
Uh, they have, because of the work requirement, they will have a case manager that is assigned to them, so that they're able to continue to be, what they have to fill out is called an individual responsibility contract, in order to be eligible for the programming. There are sets of activities that are allowable in order to continue to receive assistance. And so we do have team members who reach out and provide job coaching, help them really connect with good employment opportunities. Again, support them through whatever challenges they might be having.
Okay, so our staff are the support.
A lot of the I guess I'm, I'm trying to think through this. Said a lot of the you, you said two things there, that people that are still in the administrative cost piece of this are either mostly overseeing the eligibility of these cash payments, or they're also doing referrals.
They are mostly overseeing this, and when we have, they are making referrals to contract, to our contracted agencies right now. So if somebody is experiencing maybe some difficulties with housing, that would be when that worker is making a referral. There's two different eligibility levels in TANF. We are talking about those who are eligible under basic cash assistance. You can't, and that's, again, you have to make very little. Most people can't even have a part time job, aren't eligible for, for the program underneath that eligibility threshold. The second one is for individuals who make less than seventy five thousand dollars. So that if somebody goes to one of our contracted agencies now, and they meet the TANF eligibility underneath that higher threshold, our contractors are able to provide services to them. So it's both BCA and that higher income threshold that are being served through contract right now. And we're saying, at this point, due to the funding, we can really only focus on those who are BCA eligible and actually statually, we're, we are required to serve.
Okay, hold on, when you say BCA eligible, is that seventy five thousand?
That's the lower threshold.
And, and, and so does that mean we're not given the cacheses, or it just means we're not verifying their eligibility?
We are doing both, so we have team members who are determining eligibility. That's extremely complex for this program, and takes quite a bit of time. There has to be a lot of documentation that's provided, a lot of different eligibility rules. So we do have a, a set of team members who are responsible for that. They generally are also doing SNAP and Medicaid at the same time, as they're doing the, the TANF eligibility requirements. Following somebody getting approved or, or determined eligible for the program, they have a short time period that they need to connect with a case manager to do that individual responsibility contract. Those are the individuals who are doing the job coaching, support, and making sure that they are staying in compliance with all of the program requirements to, to, to remain eligible.
So we've got, how many people are, are in that role?
Looking to my phone friend to see how many, how many case managers do we have?
So Commissioner, great question, that's, that's changed a little bit just because of the freeze that Katie was referencing. So right now, we have about fifteen case managers. But with, with any case manager that leaves the agency, we wouldn't be backfilling that due to that freeze. So right now, we're sitting at fifteen case managers.
And, and and, and if, in determining the eligibility, with the change of the BCA's twelve fifty nine, these peo- these people who are the case managers determine whether they're eligible or not eligible.
So we have, we have separate staff in our economic mobility that determines eligibility. Once they're deemed eligible for BCA, they're referred over to our workforce and business center, where they'll meet with one of, of the fifteen case managers on an ongoing basis, working on through the IRC that Katie was referencing, through whatever their, their goals are. Are they looking for housing? Are they looking to get into behavioral health? Are they looking to get back into school to get their GED? So those are two separate divisions that work very closely together.
That makes sense, one is the upfront eligibility, the other one is follow up and case management. And the, the piece that, that got to me in my head was that if somebody's ineligible, or they, there's a, there's a sanction, it's only one dollar. So if somebody somehow is able to draw money from this program that they shouldn't have, there's absolutely no accountability other than a dollar?
Or misinformation, I'm trying to understand.
Somewhat, so if somebody is not complying with the program, there is a sanction process. That sanction process would only reduce their grant amounts. So the five fifty nine that I talked about would only reduce it to five fifty eight. But they only, they have, if they continue to be noncompliant over a three month time period, they're no longer eligible for the program. So they have a couple of months to come back into compliance with just that small sanctioned amount to the grant. And if they don't, then they're completely ineligible, would have to reapply and comply with the program to then receive a grant.
Right before, the first sanction is twenty five percent reduction, then the next
And then a hundred percent.
So it's like this, but here, it's like a cliff. I'm giving you three warnings, and then you're, strike your out instead of a reduction over time.
And that was a policy decision in twelve fifty nine as well.
That's what I gathered from you. That's interesting to me, because somebody could literally for two or three months not be following the rules, and they won't be held accountable, and all that money will stay out there, knowing that they're not following the rules for two or three months. Which is putting some pressure on you guys. How, have we, have we noticed that the, that there's been an increase of how much does that one piece cost us?
That's very little, we don't, we, we tend to see that people are compliant. Last time I looked at our sanctioned data, I believe it was less than three percent of our entire caseload had been sanctioned over a one year time period. It also is important to know, most of our residents utilize this benefit for about a six month time period. So we don't see long lengths of stay for this particular program. Again, they're really looking at how do we find a job, a good job, so that they're able to support their families. And our team in the Workforce and Business Center actually has been recognized nationally for the work that they do, and where we do things a little bit different with, really blending and braiding with WEOWA funding and things of that nature. So we're, we're pretty successful in helping people find work.
Can we move to the fiscal impact of recommendations slide? Because I want to unpack this a little bit more, so your recommendation is option two, which would leave us six hundred and seventy one thousand dollars for discretionary services. The difference between option one and two is essentially just how much we keep in that remainder. And so I guess my, I, what I want to just unpack is, what would those remaining funds be used for in anticipation of what may come, what needs may come moving forward? You know, do we need more of these funds? You know, a, a larger pot of these, because I'm assuming these are gonna be like emergencies, like, so are we gonna
It's going to the reserve funds, basically, to go into our TANF.
Yeah, but do we, I, I guess what I'm trying to determine is like, do we need the most in this reserve fund for option one? Or option two, is that gonna be enough for what we need anticipating moving forward?
Uh, so we are gonna have to make hard decisions. Right now, we have the ability to provide that emergency assistance, as I described earlier, through those remaining funds. And we can do that sometimes to a higher level, or maybe for more individuals. And so with less dollars there, we're gonna be able to offer less in those emergent situations.
How much do we, how much do we typically use in those emergent situations today, like?
Um, so any, we've seen anywhere from something as low as thirty dollars, because they just need gas money to get to their work, to their work program. Or we've seen something as high as somebody needing dental work that's not covered by Medicaid. And so that could sometimes be in a, you know, a three or four thousand dollar threshold. We never have provided more than our five thousand dollar way of doing that. And our team is really good at connecting with other resources and other ways of supporting individuals if they have that emergent need. So we would, we would still do that.
And do we have a policy on how that discretionary services are spent?
We, we do, it's required by the State Department, and so happy to share that with you all.
Sure, yeah, I'm just curious.
I also like to point out that the other primary difference between one and two is the amount of sort of off ramp for our contracts. I guess a little bit longer, and one would be contracts ending under the current expiration date of September thirtieth. And option two would be extending those through the end of December.
I think the off ramp is important to allow for the dialogue that was requested, as well as to support them in sourcing other funds. Theoretically, whatever foundations can come up with to be supportive, and for us to try to figure some stuff out, and to have some more understanding of what is coming in the special session.
I think, and we already backfilled by doing the, or we already did a three month extension, how much was that total?
Five hundred thousand, we can get you the exact number, I think it's on one of these slides, five thirty one, it is on one of the slides in your
Effectively, the five hundred thirty one plus another five hundred means that we have to, in order to get from December, from June of this year to December, we will be able to tell all those contract vendors that we put in an additional million dollars to try to make this under option two. A little less stinging, nevertheless, it's still gonna sting. But you're in good faith trying to mitigate some of the damage. We've tried to prolong, we've probably over procrastinated on some of this, but we're here now, and we're still trying to help mitigate the damage and the, and the reduction. This gives us a little bit more of a runway to do the transition, both operationally as well as fiscally. And I do believe, like, I was gonna say option one or option two, but we do have an obligation to probably start replenishing this reserve fund. And what is the amount that, what do we, like
Six hundred and sixty seven thousand.
What's the responsible amount in all of our other fis- financial funds, what we should have?
Let me just, we do have a fund balance policy for the social services fund. And so the county has a minimum amount that it can go down to, which is five million dollars. And so there's, for, for the funds that we hold and maintain, we've already had an adopted fund that balance policy for each of those funds. The TANF reserves are held at the state, and there is no specific amount that has to be held in reserve. And I think there were a lot of policy discussions about purposely putting those reserves back out into the community, because they had continued to build that off some years. And so I think that we have some strategic discussions that we can enter into and continue about what's an appropriate amount to keep an attached fund.
I will add that generally speaking, best practice on most reserve funds is usually a couple of months of operating reserves. Around ten or fifteen percent is where it tends to fall. But that's a, a decision, a policy decision about how much reserve you would want to maintain, but that's generally where reserve.
That's exactly what I was looking for, because if we have, if the human services reserve, we had to put a policy in, because I knew that we're, I think that was last year's discussion.
Was, it was twenty four.
Yep, and then now a TANF reserve, if TANF is about twenty million dollars, and we were gonna go with the ten to twenty million, I mean, ten to fifteen percent, it means that as a general rule, we would probably want to have two to three million dollars in there, in our reserve. And I think option one definitely gets us there faster, but the downside of option one is less runway for our partners and for us. Option two gets us six hundred thousand dollars more towards that two to three million dollar reserve, which is probably the responsible place to be, in my opinion, based on what we're hearing. And that means we're working our way back up to replenishing, but while also taking into account. The problem is, this can't be a three month decision, this can't be a six month decision. This will be a six month decision now, but how are we gonna replenish next year when everything you just showed us on the screen shows that we're already a hundred thirty? So this isn't, this only gets us one year of replenishment. It doesn't get us next year, cause next year we're at a hundred thirty or a hundred forty thousand dollar deficit, so. Whenever we decide today, I'm still gonna recommend, and I'm okay with option two. I'm still gonna ask, what's our, what's our three and five year plan on replenishing the reserve?
Um, solid question. I think that question goes hand in hand with what is our budget allocation overall. We've got the next three months ish. Right, I'm looking at Dion. Who's our acting CFO while we work on that position um to work through the budget. And we're gonna be having a lot of these robust conversations and. I see Daniella out there will be working on dialogue with these partners, both through your role and then Katie through your role and trying to figure this out. Uh we knew the fiscal cliff was gonna be awful and here we are and it awful. And I know that we had worked really hard to ensure, we were discussing that this morning. Uh work really hard to ensure that all these nonprofits have coaching and access to support services and we have been working really hard. To rebuild relationships with the foundations in the Denver metro area and just like a lot of things are gonna have to come online. In the next few months to attempt to at all um serve these people. Cause I I hear you and the budget, I hear you in town, you're right. And I also hear you and we're spending another um. Almost million to stabilize this through the end of the year and. Also, the numbers that are presented from these partners whose funding is ending at the end of the year of. Who they serve and why they serve them and what does emergency housing look like are very real. And so people are going to lose housing as a result. Uh this money running out and I don't know what that looks like.
I I get it.
And so we need to have that holistic conversation.
I understand, but but it's, here's what, let's play this out. Thank you for acknowledging that it's a valid question of how are we gonna replenish the reserve?
Yeah, no, that's the starting point.
But by saying we'll deal with this when we deal with the budget, by the time this conversation ends today, there's gonna be fifty other. Similar conversations between now and the next few months and this will get lost based if we passed this prologue. It'll get lost in the shuffle and I'm saying that if we leave this conversation without having some sort of. Expectation that someone will come back to us, Dion. And say this is our goal to get back to two to three million dollars in the reserve for a rainier day. Then we're just kicking the can down the road like we have been for the last two or three years. We have to be able, so I agree with them. Like, there's a lot going on. We may not be able to answer that today. What I don't want is to happen what happens all the time, which is, yeah, 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 we'll get to it. And then another fire takes our attention away, cause there's gonna be fifty of these fires in very similar conversations, so. I think I agree with them, like, we can't answer that today, but I'm saying we cannot let this be another procrastination. I see thumbs up from Emma. This cannot be another situation where we procrastinate and say, yeah, hope will be our fiscal strategy in the future. It's done, that's done. Uh that we're not gonna turn a corner on this, we have to be very responsible about figuring this out. And if already for next year, we're seeing a hundred forty thousand dollar deficit. We still need to figure out. That's just one fine, yeah, that's it, you're right. One fun, we're already seeing a hundred forty thousand, cause I'm focused right now on TANF. Then, then I don't know where you're gonna have your two or three year plan to get us back to two to three million for a responsible reserve, but. We cannot let this fall, but this cannot fall off the chain. This has to be something that goes on to the to do list and say. On August twelfth, you guys asked this, Emma and Steve agree, like, this needs to be addressed. And and let's, let's add it to all the other crap that we're having to deal with, but we cannot let this fall off, because if we look back in a year or two from now. Say, oh yeah, remember we were supposed to.
You know, I, no, I mean, I I think it's important to point out that this lens that you're talking about is going to be a a key part of our, all of our budget discussions. We're looking at our debt capacity, we're looking at all of our reserve capacity and what we're seeing coming in the next couple of years. Katie and team have already been working on change management and strategies on the administrative side, but that's what we're gonna expect from all of our. Funds across the organization is how are we looking at the efficacy of our services? Where we have opportunities to leverage partnerships, where we have, you know, some administrative um costs that we need to reduce or look at. That that's a huge part of how we're gonna be talking about and approaching this budget overall. It's not at all just human services. Um and we definitely can come back as part of the bar budget process, but kind of ongoing about how we're gonna try and address all of this. It may be s- some painful decisions, uh you know, that we have to think through, um but. I think that resilience is a priority and uh keep talking about it.
You, you just acknowledged that, yes, we got more fires to put out. And it's very possible one of the bigger strategies that you have might address this among the others, but I'm still saying. Plan a flag here, we have to follow up on this issue. Thank you, I know you guys are working hard on it, so go ahead.
I don't have anything really to add. Um I think option two is the place we need to go right now. So I would support option two, thank you very much.
I'm okay with option two.
Yes, yeah.
Bad, bad options. Oh yeah, that's, that's great.
I actually, it's, it's, it looks like it's coming from us. It's because of the location, I think. It's in North Glen. The, the location of the town hall and so maybe they meant join us in Adams County, I don't know. Yeah, we, we, I won't pretend to understand what they.
This is, this is a.
I mean to, you know, get inside their minds.
We currently have our schedule, right?
We do.
And it is at the Anything Here on Street Library.
On the twenty fifth, that's not the same, it's not the same date. And we've done a lot more promotion than than they have just started to do, but they did do a uh a text message um to quite a few people about thirty minutes ago.
This is not a conflict with us, you're just giving us a heads up that.
Like, I just don't. I just, you know, but the timing is, is not.
Monday the eighth.
Hey, go ahead. Alright, so uh we have a draft run of show that is up on y'all's screens. I also gave you all a printed copy of it. Um including just kind of what we're planning for our pre-event, but I'll just run through really quickly what our run of show will be. Um we'll do a five minute kind of call time. We're about to get started at six. Uh we'll do kind of a call to order announcement that our event is starting, how to use our VZP translation services. And then we'll turn it over to um Commissioner Baca, our Chair of the Board, to. Um welcome our attendees, share the purpose of the town hall and then do a brief introduction of herself and then tee up the rest of the board to do very brief introductions as well. Um we're gonna keep our presentation pieces very short because we wanted, this entire town hall has been really couched as being. Super community focused, and so we want community to be able to lead the conversation. You'll see, we do have plans to make sure that we can keep the reins on things though. Um so then after the board does their introductions, um they'll pass it over to Dion to give an introduction as our new county manager. And that this is your first town hall since taking on the role as county manager. Um and then to give our first slide, which will be just a very brief update overview of the special. Uh yeah, it's right there, it's uh we're at that, almost at the bottom of the stage. Uh giving an overview of our special legislative session, um we know this is top of mind for a lot of people. We wanna make sure that we're addressing this right out of the gate. This is what this is gonna mean for us and then kind of transitioning into the Q and A portion. Um we are planning the majority of our town hall for Q and A. We have an hour set aside with. We're gonna have at least this, these seven prompts that you see here built out and ready to insert. If things are, if the vibe is, if the vibe is not good, or if there's a big lull in conversation and we don't have as many people asking questions. And these are definitely things that we think people in our community care about, building senses of community through our community events. Um how we are showing up for our community members through things like Back to School Bash, economic development and things like our um. Carda Earn Spaceport and the great things that are happening out there. Um the things that are happening out of Riverdale Animal Shelter and the great work that they've been doing. Um ARPA, Funding Our Changemakers, all of those different things. We'll have kind of those slides ready. And we'll find natural places to build them in as well. So when questions are coming up and when we're answering them and we see a natural place to do this. Um we'll have Raymond and IT ready to go to those specific slides and pull them in naturally. And Nikki and I will be in constant communication and able to just be like, hey, let's pop this in right now. Um Jamie and I will be playing mic runner throughout the room and doing our Q and A. This is the general flow at seven fifteen then, um Nikki playing moderator will say, um we're gonna take our last question or two. We'll wrap it at seven twenty with uh coming back to the chair for our chair to do a quick little closing remarks. And then we'll give it uh ten minutes or so there for folks to say, hey, we have resource tables in the back of the room. Um from seven thirty to seven forty, we'll be done by seven twenty, twenty five ish. And then give them about fifteen minutes to go mingle, do their resource tables. By seven forty five, I'm gonna give the nice kind, you go to the next page. Um you don't have to go home, but you can't stay here because we do have to be out of the room by eight. Um but other than that. I'm sorry, was that?
Well, as long as we play the song that corresponds with them, that's right.
I'll have it teed up and ready to go. Um at our, at our Comer City Town Hall, I was kindly like, everyone leave now. So I have no problem being a person. Um but yeah, we have our roles and responsibilities all divvied up and we're ready to go on that. That is our general run of show. Open to y'all's thoughts. We, we can go over, I do have two potential themes for presentation, but the general run of show, I wanna make sure you feel good about before I.
And we have secured, um the um five different departments are going to have tables with um information and also presentations at the back of the room. So you will have lots of resources there.
Great.
Uh it's all the departments that we discussed last week, they've all confirmed.
Thank you.
Looks great.
Thank you. So you. Alright, so um I heard you guys liked the baseball presentation and I love a theme. I love a themed presentation, so um I put together two just kind of general outlines for what a themed presentation could look like. Um we have this putting the pieces together, uh an idea kind of like a puzzle theme. These are just, they aren't necessarily in the order or exactly what they will look like, but this is what this theme would look like. Lot of photos in the first room, so how our community comes together to be one big beautiful whole. I shouldn't have said big beautiful together, I realize that. One lovely large together whole. Words, we, the English language gets just changed. Um here's how that theme plays throughout. Next one. And then uh this would be example of one of those inserts of a success story that we would have continued throughout. Um and then the second theme would be kind of a festival theme and especially coming off of our county fair. I think this would be kind of a fun one as well. Um step right up Adams County, um we would have that kind of like carnival fair theme going throughout, you can go to the next slide. Similarly, we'd keep those kind of same pieces coming through this slide too. And same thing with um our success story. What do you think, what do you like, what do you dislike? I have a favorite and I'm not gonna tell you what it is, cause I don't wanna buy is yours. Um, kinda like a hair one, I think it's kinda cute, but I like both, to be honest.
Well, I'm just gonna say, I I like putting pieces together, but I also am fine with either one, so. Uh I mean, unless we really want a consensus or we're going to do it, I'm fine with that too. There will be more town halls, there will be more themes. So we can use.
Why does they, why does this look different than this train?
Because there are two different ones.
We have a puzzle and we have a fair.
So it's a puzzle or a fair.
There you go.
I really like the puzzle.
I said puzzle, but I.
Two puzzles.
I love them both.
Actually, I, I.
Yeah, I like them both. We get a majority.
Why don't you pick?
Somebody else has to say something, I said.
I like puzzle.
I'm partial to puzzle.
I like puzzle and I had to make sure that I wasn't making one look better than the other. I had to be like, don't you do it. And then I also, in the little packets I gave y'all, I made sure everybody had some copies of our town hall promotional flyer. Probably conversations and I wanted to make sure that in case you feel like you need to have some more copies, you have them on you.
I appreciate that, thank you.
We have, um all of our promotion has started, we've been doing quite a bit of outreach already.
And this is already online or not?
Um it has already been, um it's all the, all the outreach has started in a lot of places. I will make sure you get a digital.
See it on the face, on the face.
We're doing puzzles?
Puzzle, puzzles.
Thoughts, questions, comments, concerns, knock knock jokes.
Sounds perfect, uh and we're gonna get the questions that were submitted beforehand.
Any questions yet, but we have had a few RSVPs come in, so.
And as far as our events, um calendar, our Facebook event, we have about fifty people so far. But we have received also RSVPs that were, that were asking people to specifically send in separate from that um um event invite.
And we will be doing. Live stream, so we are asking people to sp- specify on the RSVP if they're coming in person or if they just want a calendar invite for the live stream.
Will they be able to ask questions from the live stream?
No, if we wanna ask a question and they're not coming in person, they need to submit it and submit the question.
You got it. I don't have anything else about the town hall.
One last thing, speaking of live stream, could I just get um some feedback on what we do moving forward with the employee meetings? And from ELT as well as the BSCC, um I know that that it had come to us through um the poll. That employees preferred to have a hybrid of both that we have, that we're streaming and we do in person, because a lot of them just can't attend. Because of their front facing. That we have, that we're streaming and we do in person because a lot of them just can't attend because of their front-facing jobs. Are we good with that, to move forward with that, to plan that out?
So I think the more accessible it is, I prefer, but it, we won't be able to take questions through the live stream, I don't think, um, so I think that's a. Will we be able to do that with employees?
For an internal event? Here's the thing, and we could theoretically be doing a simultaneous live stream that is interactive for this. We just have not tested that before. So we are, and what we had discussed before was doing a non-interactive live stream for this one. And this is the first time that we're doing both simultaneously. We can do an interactive live stream and I would rather test it doing both at once internally before we test it externally.
Yes, and I was speaking of the employee meetings.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I would, and I would rather do that the first time, doing it in.
We can, it's like, we can set it up, we just need to, yeah, that's something we have plenty of time to work on. So we could set it up where they can interact, they could also send in, they could send in questions prior, but then also ask them live. Um, even if it's in the chat, and then we ask, ask it for them, but we can, we can work on that.
Okay. Cool.
So, the question is, do, do we wanna do a hybrid of the employee, all employee meeting?
Yes.
Okay, so we've taped them in the past and then they can go out and watch the recording?
They can, yes.
Okay. So here's what I don't want to happen, um, is that they're in the building, they're not coming down to the. You're not coming down, and you know. They use twice a year right now, at the most, I don't, there's also been overflow where maybe they didn't have access. As well, I understand that, um, this is a twice-a-year event, I mean, if you think hybrid isn't a bring more, I feel like. I don't think it's asking a lot for people to come in person, that's just me.
I mean, like there's, like, managers can provide coverage and plan, right? If we're doing multiple options and locations and times, that's what we've done in the past.
And we are gonna be notifying them, uh, within the coming week, which would mean that they have two months of advance notice.
I mean, it. I don't know, it's like. I think you're gonna get a lot of people logging in whether they need to or not, rather than showing up, but. I, I'm not gonna force people to, you know what's gonna happen, people who wanna come in person will come in person. Those who don't wanna come in person will either not come. Or say they're gonna be there and take off, which is what happened too. No.
Like the request came from staff, who have, who wanna listen in while they're, I. Uh, but I don't know how, I don't know how many people that is, and so I don't, uh, I, I don't know, I also feel like all employees, like all families are only twice a year, you know.
Well, we'll say, we had a lot of feedback for hybrid because we also had a really quick turnaround time on the invitation last time, and so. It may, that may have contributed to that, it's just it was kind of last minute and getting the invitation out. Um, so people weren't able to make up their arrangements, um, with schedules and with more lead time, that may not be as much of an issue, so. Super strongly about it, it's all deferential.
Maybe we try that, extra lead time, see if that helps, and then we'll get feedback again and then we'll continue to tweak it through the process. Makes sense.
We can also visit them in person where they're at.
You're doing site visits now?
No, we can, absolutely.
Smaller department meetings, is that what you mean or?
Well, I like that, I don't hate that idea, I think the problem is our employees are spread out across quite a wide array.
Yeah.
And, you know, there's some in the Western Service Center, there's some in Human Services, there's some in Aurora, there's.
Some that work remotely.
There's some that work remotely, there's some that work out in Bennett, like, we just got, we got people everywhere. And so, I love that, I don't, that's a lot more meetings.
It's a split it up too.
We can totally split it up.
Talked about doing that anyway. Like being out there more.
I, I don't hate that, um, I just think that. We've gone to the employee population centers before, which has always been like here in Human Services. Cause we include every other location, Commerce City, like, there's just like a.
Yeah, there's Commerce City, there's also.
Ton of employees all over.
The only other thing that I will bring up, and Nikki and I were just talking about this, is the perception of, of the reaction to the employee feedback. When we, when we did the poll, the majority of people asked for the hybrid, so I just wanna put that back.
We've heard, who responded to the poll?
Yes, oh, now granted, you know, it was an extremely small percentage of employees that responded to the poll, but it's, you know, but we did get. We did get, you know, around a hundred, so. And over, I think it was sixty percent that said that they preferred. The hybrid meeting.
How much?
Sixty percent, sixty percent of the respondents out of the.
Try it, and then if we don't like it, you know, change it.
Either way, you, you, we either try saying, no, be here in person, or we try hybrid, we get, we get information either way, so. Uh, if we wanna do hybrid, we can do hybrid, we'll see what happens.
And then if we need to change it back, you change it back.
I need to see it changing back, but.
I agree, but.
You mean, once we go hybrid, is that your concern?
See how many people. Yeah.
Whatever.
Okay.
Let's make it.
I, I would like to know how many join hybrid, um. I, I, I know, I know how these work, is that you turn it on and you like, and you go, and you go, you go pet the cat. And you go do laundry and you go meet someone at the front door, I mean.
I think that I'd be okay with more lead time and maybe we can come back with just logistically, maybe some. More creative options to engage folks who are in further out areas and kind of logistical side, um, I think that would be fine.
There's a difference between watching it from your office and watching it from home too.
Yeah.
You know, I. Perspective.
Yeah.
The rooms that we're holding them in have limited capacity and there is no way that in those two rooms, we can fit one hundred percent of our staff in those two, ever.
That's okay, there, we're not gonna have a hundred percent come, so.
But we have more people who would not be able to join otherwise, that can then join hybrid that would not be coming.
Well, and this is what I mean, bringing things back, we can look at it, it's.
Right.
Is government center, public area, the right room, or is there other ways that we can, you know, plan this to get more folks to. Make it easier for people, you know, that we can talk about.
And when we've looked at the conference center, it doesn't, I, I mean, it fits a, a, a few more, you know, but, um, it's not, it's not a drastic number increase.
I don't know, just like.
Maybe don't. And I apologize, I wasn't trying to like talk on top of you there.
No.
We started the same time. And, and I do agree, I really prefer the in-person, um, I just wanted to make sure that I bring that up to you because that was the feedback that we received.
I would say that's general feedback these days.
I agree.
To be at home on a Zoom meeting.
Bring it to the table.
I forgot, what's the, what's, what, what dates are we talking about?
The twentieth.
October fifteenth and sixteenth are the next.
Okay, I say we just go with the in-person.
Let's just go in person.
Let's see what the feedback is like and we'll continue to.
The employee town hall or the other one?
The employee town hall.
No, all, all employee meetings, all employee meetings.
Well, yeah, employee meeting, all employee meeting, all employee meeting is what I meant by employee town hall. Zoom, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, yes. Okay, in-person then?
I'm fine with the hybrid option, I think that would give us a chance to pilot that and, because we have so many different, uh, locations where our employees are called to work, they could.
Anyone could log in from.
Anyone could log in from anywhere.
Okay. Um, I'm fine with, I'm fine either way, I'm fine with hybrid, if we wanna go that way. It's Steve, Kathy, I don't.
I'm actually fine either way, I really kinda listen to what everybody. Thanks, I, I think.
Try new things, and if you like it, keep it, if you don't, change it.
Okay.
And let's see what participation's like too.
I do, and I do think that if we go hybrid and we find that there's really that, the.
An issue.
It's an issue, then we will, then we go back, then we eliminate that, I mean, that is a choice. That is a choice that I'd be willing to make if that's what the, is that, that, if that's what we determine is in the best interest of the organization.
Okay, four for hybrid.
I, sure.
I know, I'm sorry. I'm working on that, I'll come back to you.
I already know where this is going, is that it's gonna end up in the same bucket of, where's our forty dollars? That's where it's going, um. We went hybrid and now the devils are not gonna let us, you know, now we have to, yeah.
But hybrid doesn't mean, doesn't mean all remote, if people can come and, I mean, we're gonna.
It's fine, it's fine.
Okay.
It's fine, we're putting way too much.
Yep.
Too much.
Well, I think, well, I, I think, I think what we're dancing around is we're, are we're not talking about what, what, what do we want out of this meeting? What do we want, what is the point of the all-employee meeting? What, what do we want out of it? If it's really that we want energy and feedback and we want to be in the same room with people, then that's what we need to do. If this is just, if it's, if it's something that can be handled by an e, via an email, but we'll just go ahead and make it hybrid. So they see moving mouths and not just read it off the page, but they're still on a screen. And what, what, what's the, what's, what is the goal? And benefit of this meeting that we're even bothering to schedule?
The opportunity for interaction.
Then that should be in person. If it's a newsletter, we can send a newsletter, I mean, so that, that's, that's where I am on it.
Um. I didn't hear that air conditioning's been turned off.
Every, every stuff that is on me.
It's not.
Oh, the, uh.
Don't, I don't mean, I don't mean to throw that at you, I'm just saying, are we gonna talk?
Can we bring to you tomorrow after our, our session, the AIR items that we have?
Sure. We do have one letter that, um.
And I will make it as easy as I can.
One letter that we need to send out today, if we can, um, but.
That's it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Sweating in here.
Try and get your.
I wasn't hot earlier, no. Stay longer if we have air conditioning.
Thank you. More comfortably, even in the room, helps.
The PUC, in the sense that Excel is providing their just transitions solicitation proposal. Their concern is that the PUC has preliminarily said. We're not going to let you project out demand loads on projects. Unless that project is already sufficiently far along in a development review process and they've committed to a contract. Our concern, not Excel's, our concern. Is that we already have a lot of the development community saying, hey. It's incredibly hard for us to make commitments and investments when we don't know if we're gonna be able to get power for projects. And so, um, while Excel provided talking points, et cetera. Um, I crafted a letter that seemed more consistent with our concerns and policy positions. To be sent to the PUC saying, please, please reconsider how you're looking at demand loads. Um. The letter that's drafted there can easily just come from me in my capacity as a community economic development director. That might be the fastest thing to do because this is due today, um, but.
What is the consequence of the demand load prediction, like what is on the table if they can predict, what is off the table if they can't?
So if they are, if PUC holds Excel to only the demand loads thing and say, yep, we've got something that's really far down the line and they've signed a contract. Then they will only be able to build out their capacity, their lines to that demand. They won't really be able to forecast further into the future, oh, Federal Boulevard, you have upzoned. And you are trying to get additional housing density there, it would make sense for you to be able to meet or plan for higher demands. They would say only if you have projects in the pipeline.
Okay.
It's a link to it.
Yeah, it's really gonna slow investment.
I, I support the letter and whoever, however y'all look man signing it.
We have to be more, we need to be more nimble.
I can run downstairs and change the format real quick, but. In the interest of time, wanted to give you an easy button.
Um.
You can also certainly still contact PUC independently or.
Is there any reason we don't want this, like, knowing that we're trying to also build the relationships from the top?
Are you saying?
I think that's a good idea, I know with the time crunch, um.
It's literally.
It might have been better, but I do think that's worth considering going.
Just going down the hole and changing a name or whatever, but I'm just trying to. I'm thinking of big picture stuff and we're trying to put something in the bank here. And we kind of been not.
Having Dion and Lynn sign it could be more powerful.
That's what I'm getting.
Okay, yeah, I, 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 I think that should.
And that's normally how we would have done it, I understand, this is just.
You did great.
Yes, no, no, that's, I, I, I get that, I think it should come from the, the board, yes.
It can certainly come from the board, I, I would also support Chair and CM or just Chair, like, I support all of it.
Chair on behalf of the board.
Yeah, it's CM, I think we need to start pushing.
I agree, I agree, I'm just trying, I'm just trying.
I want to start pushing Dion's name out of, out there, that's part of it.
I just wanna make sure we're all.
Dion and Jenny, or do you want board?
I think board too. So I'd rather have you and Dion, not that you're not great, Jenny.
All right. We good?
We'll get that changed real quick today.
Yes.
I need to run announcers, my computer's out of juice, but I'll be right there.
Um, so everything else we will push in tomorrow, I, I have one manager comment and that is really just, you know.